I now call the October 11th meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to all of you in the room. We've got a full room this morning. All board members are present and in their seats. As a reminder, the agenda for today's meeting was approved during yesterday's meeting. And I will also point out that you have a sheet at your spot this morning that's not labeled. It is the chronic absenteeism by grade. And it confirms, or actually, it. I had a theory yesterday and it proves my theory wrong. So thank you for that, Commissioner. Appreciate that. I'll just highlight for anyone, for you folks in the room who weren't here yesterday. What this tells me is, big surprise, right? Our highest percentage of students that are chronically absent are seniors, followed by juniors, and then sophomores. So, shocker.
But I was mentioning to Kathy, and this is, I think, instructive for the audience. We did a little sampling of school districts over years ago after the kindergarten class had graduated and left. The kindergarten number there is highly correlational to high school graduation and post-secondary success. So if you want to look at who's really at risk, look at the chronic absenteeism of your kindergarteners. That's a good indication where that starts.
Thank you. May I have an approve, may I have a motion to approve today's agenda? I just did that. I'm so used to saying it, it just came out. All right. In that case, I'd like to welcome Denise Kaler. Michelle, you have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for clarification. So if the public were to go out and look at today's agenda, the consent agenda is on Wednesday, October 11th. It hasn't, it's still out there publicly shown that way. I know we approved, we're approving today's agenda and we approved yesterday's agenda. When we moved the consent agenda item from Tuesday to Wednesday, it was for staffing so that they could have time to come down and report to us. Also not keep them after five o'clock because a lot of times our meetings run after five, which happened yesterday. She, we had to go over on an item. I'm just concerned about how yesterday's vote could stand because we 10 to zero voted to move it to Wednesday. And then based off of a board member requesting it to be removed and moved to Tuesday, I just was concerned about how we're just able to move something that's that big on voting to a different day. And it got moved yesterday and how can that vote still stand? Because we just moved it without an actual vote or discussion on. Because I was told, I wasn't told in a duo meeting that we were going to be doing that. I found out the morning we were approving it. Another board member was the same way. He was not aware that that was getting moved. So we found out a few minutes before we were going to vote for that. That doesn't, I just want to know if that's setting a precedent that we're just going to be able to move something that big that we voted 10 to zero on to move, to give us more time for discussion. And then the public is also not aware that unless they were paying attention in those first few minutes of our meeting, that that was going to be voted on, on a different day. So I just wanted to make a public statement, make that, make, you know, get a clarification on that.
Happy to explain.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that.
So, so as you know, the chair and the vice chair set the agenda. And in the time that you've been on the board and when I sat down there next to you, there are frequent changes to the agenda as we flow because some presenters run long, some run short. So then we'll move items around. We've moved all kinds of votes around on the, the chair has moved all kinds of things around on the agenda throughout a meeting. And so there was, the other eight people who did attend the duos knew that that was coming. I didn't realize that you had missed it. So I apologize. I would have come to you and let you know that that was coming up, but it was just an effort. We know that the consent agenda can run long. So if there's an opportunity to move it up and help get us out of here earlier on the Wednesday, that's been stated as a goal as well. So that's why we did that.
Most of the things that are moved or polled or moved around or moved out of respect for time. And I know you've pulled, the chair's pulled, and we've done it in another month to give it more time because there's not enough clarification or everything. I'm always fine with it because it's usually we're pulling it to the next month to give us more time to digest what it is. There's not clarification on it. I've never ever had a problem with that. And a lot of times we move it within the same day, little things get shifted around. Hey, we've got 20 minutes extra. We're ahead of time. Let's move this thing up. This is a whole move from another day. And it's a big, in my opinion, it's a big item because there's a lot on the consent agenda item that, that are, you would say there should be non-controversial, but there's, there's more information that we just don't have, like what I found out yesterday in a three-minute conversation. She's maybe coming back for a whole report on it because there's so much more that we just don't know. So I just want to make, just want to make that publicly known that that was a kind of a big move to move that to yesterday and to vote on that yesterday. So I just want to make that clarification.
I'll respond and just note that the consent agenda, by definition, should not be a big item and should not be controversial. That's, that's why it's in the consent agenda. So there has been some discussion around board policy and how it relates to the consent agenda because we are frequently not in compliance with board policy when we're pulling things off of the consent. So that might need to be a topic for a future board meeting. Absolutely. Thank you. With that, I will welcome Denise Kaler to introduce our Teacher of the Year team. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much. So I'm excited to bring the 2023 Kansas Teacher of the Year team before you today. You all were able to talk with them at the beginning of their journey. And now as they are rounding out their journey, they're going to come and, yeah. Randy's giving the cry. Yeah, we were talking about the victory lap and they were a little concerned that their picture would be changed out for the new team. So we're, we're working through this, we're working through this. But they have done an amazing job representing the work that you all are doing, representing the teaching profession as a whole. So I hope that you all will be as proud of them as, as, as we are. So today, we're going to start off with our Kansas Teacher of the Year, Mr. Brian Skinner. And Brian's going to lead us off. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's a pleasure to be back and speaking here again. It's crazy that this has been a year now. This picture that's up there was taken at the banquet that was in September of 2022. And we were just recently at the banquet for September 2023 when Taylor Bussinger was named. And the 2024 team was, were starting their journey. And we can't believe that it's been a whole year. It seems like just yesterday that we've been doing this. But it's, it's been what a year and we see this as just the close of a chapter, not the end of the book. Because we know we're going to be continuing to, to work as a team and continuing to represent public education as we go around. So our vision across the state has been education is what we make it. And I think that really personifies that idea of a team. A team is not just a group of people that are doing all the same things so it can get done faster. A team is a group of people that are working together and building their strengths so that they can be more efficient and more effective. And that's what we've tried to do as we've worked around today and that's what we hope to continue to do, to represent public education. Just a quick note of, of our year and some of what we've, what we've accomplished and what we've tried to represent. So for me personally, this is my 112th event or presentation that I've had since this last banquet. As I've gone around, it's been a busy year. So I'm excited for that to slow down maybe just a touch so I can spend some more time with my kids in my classroom and doing some of that work. But I know that I'm going to still be out there presenting. As a team, we've presented 42 times. For me, I've driven roughly 1,200, 1,2,500 miles and I've flown just over 22,000 miles. And I've presented in each of those states that you see above there as we've gone around. So it's, it's really been a joy and it's really been an experience that I couldn't have imagined or replicated in any other way. So I appreciate all of you that have had a part in supporting this program because it's been impactful for all of us. Through those 42 visits that we've done, 21 of them have been to different colleges that we've toured. And across the college visits, we've had a number of takeaways that we've really, really kind of latched on to. First of all, first of all, is that the promise of what's coming up for public education is really strong. Time and time again, we left a college or a university and the conversations that centered around were, wow, these aspiring educators really know how to take care of kids. They really know how to see all kids, how to make sure that they are seen and heard and can really highlight the things that are most important in ensuring that everyone finds their best success going forward. So that's really, really encouraging for the public education profession as a whole. It was also encouraging to see the professors and how they're creating their lessons and how they're being able to build inclusive strategies for future educators to work forward. And we noticed throughout the colleges, the small Kansas colleges were the ones that had the highest percentage of, of education students. And that was really cool to be able to see, just large, large percentages represented there at those colleges. And just seeing everyone's passion is something that never gets old. And throughout this year, everywhere we've gone, we have highlighted public education and Kansas as a whole. So today, we were thinking we were going to shift that up a little bit and bring the focuses to our districts specifically. Because our districts are the ones that have really built us up and helped us get to the place where we can really highlight public education and where we can really represent Kansas. So today, we want to each take a moment and talk about what's special about our districts that we come from and why our districts are doing great things just like the other schools in Kansas. And before I turn it off to the first, I know that Ottawa is up there. Ms. Jamie Swindler, one of her team members, is unable to be here today. But I know that she would speak exceptionally high of the great things that are happening there. And we visited Ottawa and I can attest for the wonderful things that are going across in Ottawa Public Schools. So I want to make sure that I give that note since she's not able to be here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pam first to represent Topeka.
Good morning. First off, I just want to thank you guys in the state of Kansas for having the Teacher of the Year program. What an awesome opportunity for, for us to highlight public education and everything that goes, all the hard work that educators put in their classrooms. I am from Topeka Public Schools and, you know, we're kind of familiar with the saying, it takes a village. And it truly does take a village. And in our district, you know, morale is at an all-time low as far as teacher morale in buildings. And, you know, it really does take a village. And our superintendent in our district has found this. And so they realize the importance of everyone, from the custodians to the paraprofessionals. So as you can see on my slides, I have pictures of our principals having lunch with students. And a family fitness night where we bring families in on an evening and our assistant superintendent is having, is doing the parachute with some children. We have custodians highlighted for their hard work and contributions to the schools and keeping us safe and healthy. We have Dr. Anderson and our superintendent here and she's spinning the wheel for, for Administration Week and highlighting all the wonderful things that admin does for our schools. Just overall, bringing authors in. So because in our community, it really truly does take a village. So I just want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
Hi, I am Mallory Keith and I represent USD 268 Cheney, which is west of Wichita. And I teach three-year-olds. So I'm going to start off with that picture of the gift bags. One thing that I really love about Cheney is that it's not just a district, but it's a community. We're a smaller, a smaller town. We have a little over 2,000 people. And it's really special that if our district needs something, I feel like I can go to community members and they provide what we need. And so most of the things in that gift bag were donated by different businesses in our community. And then like they got little treats for their drive home. And again, those were donated by our community. So I just feel really fortunate to work in a district where our needs are met by our school, but also we can go outside the walls and get support from community members. So other things that we did, you can see Brian in that grid of four pictures. In my classroom, we were building towers and Brian being Mr. Competitive had the highest. And so anyways, just having fun with kids. And then another thing I thought was really neat, I never get over to the high school because I am in the elementary school. And so I got to see things, and I have little kids at home, so I also don't have big kids over there. And so I got to see things that big kids are doing. And I feel like I was in high school like five years ago, but my math doesn't really line up sometimes. So anyways, the things these kids do, I'm like, oh my gosh, I can't believe you can do that. And so just looking ahead too, like these kids are leaving school prepared for what they want to do or at least generally have an idea of like, I want to go into woodworking or, you know, I really like coding or robotics or like in our ag structures, Jamie, you can see her, we wired a light bulb, so maybe they want to be an electrician. And so, and it was nice for me, these poor teachers. Now I'm like, well, I know that you can do that. So I need this project done for my classroom. Do you mind helping me out? So anyways, getting, you know, that cross-curricular grade level too of high school or supporting three-year-olds. I learned that just from having them come visit Cheney too. But one of my favorite things, that top right picture of us across the street, I learned how important my voice is for public education and that isn't really my jam. However, it's important. And so even, you know, Brian might be president one day or something because he loves that. But I can advocate just in my district or my community. And so that was something I learned that was really special. And so thank you for the opportunity just to represent Kansas. It was so wonderful.
We really liked that picture of Brian. It just is so him. Hi, I'm Jessica Gazano. I am from USD 230 Spring Hill. And I wanted to take a minute just to talk a little bit about what KTOY has done for me. So in the beginning, I was completely terrified to talk in front of people. I think the very first speech I had to give was to two people and I don't think I slept for probably a good five days beforehand. And so when my team surrounded me, when I met them, they gave me compliments. And as they gave me more compliment, compliments, my confidence grew until I realized that the words that I had to say were worth, they were worth hearing. And so we went across the state of Kansas. Obviously, we've been from western Kansas to southeast Kansas. And although the communities and the traditions were different, the different places that we went, what was the same was the human spirit and how when you give someone a compliment, it boosts their confidence. You can see the corners of their, of their mouth turn up a little bit. And as we visited all of the districts that are represented here today, I saw teachers taking time to focus on the good things in every student that they have and give them compliments so that their confidence can soar and they can be successful. And I know teachers across the state are doing wonderful things to help people be successful because I have seven of the best teachers that have helped me grow this year.
Hello, my name is Carly Torres. I teach in Hutchinson, Kansas. I teach fifth grade. I also am going to brag, well, talk about a little bit how KTOY affected me. I said, one of my favorite things about KTOY was our district visits. I always left feeling so inspired and excited after a district visit. There were, there are so many amazing things happening in our schools. And even in my own community, I had very little idea what all went on in the high school. And I often would catch myself saying, if I were a high school student today, would I have gone into education? And it's not because I don't love what I do, but it's because students have so many opportunities to learn trades, skills, and different careers, sometimes before they can even legally drive. So this year, I got to walk alongside and learn from these amazing other educators that I got to share my time with. Every time I heard Erica speak about her love of science, I thought, man, if I were in her class, there's no doubt in my mind I would have gone into the field of science. If every time I listen to Pam and Mallory share their love for early childhood education and pre-K readiness, they made me think, man, that looks easy, but we know it's far from. I walked into Jessica's art room and my creativity took over and I wondered, what could I have done if I followed my creative side? What talents could I have used? I watched Jamie and Brian speak about the importance of fully funding special education and staying up to date on SPED policy. And I'm reminded to fight for our most valuable students. I walked the halls of the Lewisburg District and it made me wish I taught alongside Kendall. And I only think, what magic could we brew up? As I reflect on these, I can't help but to think about how lucky our students are for the time they're going to school and that they get to learn from these educators. If there's one thing though, that I want to take away from this year, it's how honored and valued we felt as educators. So we, every person in this room, I think, we need to make sure we make all teachers, paraprofessionals, substitutes, everyone that works inside the school and outside our school feel just as unvalued and important as we did.
Hi, it's so good to be back. I'm Kendall Norberg from Lewisburg 416. And I think when I spoke to you guys last time, I talked a little bit about growing up in the southern Johnson County area and being a Blue Valley student from K through 12. And then I went back to Blue Valley and did my student teaching. So I had a great experience growing up, a great experience student teaching. And now, as I've raised my family, I've gone just a little further south into Lewisburg. But that has kind of narrowed my perspective. And I've lived my whole life on this side of the state, very close. I even taught in Missouri for a few years because I'm that close to the Missouri line. So what KTOY did for me, I think, is it sort of broadened my perspective. I got to meet all these great teachers. I knew what was going on in my area of the state with my experience in public education. But it really opened my eyes to this huge state of Kansas that we live in. And everything that we have that's going on in public education is amazing. I believe that it really helped me, like I said, gave me a new perspective. I was able to go back to my district. I speak up a little more. I go to the board meetings and speak up. I join those, all those different meetings and, you know, when they want you to share ideas, I feel like I have, I have that perspective. I have those good ideas to bring back. I've seen things going on in other districts and I feel a little more apt to speak up for that. So that's really one thing that KTOY has done for me that I think has been amazing. My district, Lewisburg, we have some great things. I wrote down all sorts of bullet points just to share with you, but I'll just kind of go through a few. I, I did raise my children in Lewisburg, so I should know everything that's going on in all the buildings. And you really don't. I get so focused, I'm a fourth grade teacher, so focused on my fourth grade team or what's going on in my 345 building. So this was a great opportunity to step outside of that and on my own district visit, learn so much. And for instance, we have added a daycare program. The preschool program, when my children were starting preschool, Jessica started in Lewisburg. Now we have this amazing preschool program. We have an at-risk preschool in our district. We have now, like I said, we started a daycare component to that. So we have children that might come to daycare for half-day and then switch over to preschool or vice versa. And that has been wonderful for our community, but for the other teachers in our district working full-time. In my building, in our elementary building, we do a lot to connect with the community, to connect with high school. We do a lot to bring in high schoolers. We have them run some clubs. And elementary cool kids think nothing is cooler or better than having a high schooler come in and run the Lego club or run the chess club. They think that is fantastic. We even bring in some high schoolers to do like an after-school homework help where we have teachers overseeing. But high school students can certainly sit and work on math facts with our elementary school students. So that is just a win-win for everybody. We have a lot of clubs and we keep bringing in new things to our high school or middle school. This year, they've opened just like a gaming club, a walking club, just trying to reach all those kids that maybe don't fit into that, hey, I'm going to play basketball or volleyball. We've even brought in the, the shooting sports club, which has been a fantastic thing. And if my girls were still in high school, they would have been, they would have been joining that for sure. It's a lot of fun for kids. At our district level, I will say that we do have a lot of support with our professional development. We have two days during the year where teachers get to decide what they want to do and pursue that. And just the continued support for the PLCs and our MTSS process. And if you ask any administrator in my district, they're going to just go on and on about their staff and how great we are. And that's, that's everyone. Like I've, we've heard some of the other KTOY members say from our custodians, our paraprofessionals, the people in our lunchrooms, our teachers, everybody makes such a big difference. At our high school too, and I brought in a whole list, I am just amazed at what this, my small district can offer to students. And we, we, because we're small, we work with Fort Scott Community College. But these kids, like the things that they can go into, like Carly was saying, in her district, there's welding. And we don't have that right in Lewisburg, but we're providing the transportation for kids to do that. My own daughter got her CNA last year as a senior in high school and her second semester took a college class and worked as a professional CNA, making quite a bit of money. I was really impressed, but also just helped her know, this is the field I want to go in. Now she's pursuing that at KU. So I just, I could keep going on and on about my district. But I appreciate so much being a part of the KTOY team. I have been, I have felt so celebrated and I just, it has sort of renewed my passion to go out there and help celebrate all of public education. So thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Erica Huggard and I'm from Emporia Public Schools. And I want to thank, thank you all for the opportunity to be a part of the Kansas Teacher of the Year team. I learned a lot. Before the Kansas Teacher of the Year team, I was already an advocate for public schools, an advocate for teachers. But the perspective that I gained by visiting the other districts just made me feel so much pride for what we do in our just made me feel so much pride for what we do in our schools. And I know that in my classroom and in my science wing, I see what we do in public schools every day. But being able to see this happening across the state and our districts, um, again, just totally renewed my faith in education and what teachers are doing. So I'd love to talk a little bit about what we're doing in Emporia. Um, if we start up at the top, you will see the picture of the K-TOY team um with our future educators. These are our aspiring educators. And we have actually over 40 students in that pathway now. And our teacher that took over that pathway a few years ago around COVID time, started with a group of eight. And those students are out in our classrooms, helping in our elementary schools and getting experience. And they're really getting to get their feet wet, um, looking at pursuing a career in education. So it was really awesome to meet with them and have a panel discussion um with them. The next picture over, you'll see our early childhood center. Um, this is um a center that we were able to get because we passed a bond. And we reach um at-risk kids, starting at, with our infant toddler kids, um, which is an itinerant position. We start seeing, providing services for students in our cooperative area um very early. And then they can come into our early childhood center at three and four and then be ready when they get to kindergarten. The next picture over is my classroom. Those are my muscle mannequins. Um, I love science, which you've, you've heard um my team members share about that. I am in an incredible science wing, um, which again, we were able to do because of a bond and the support of the taxpayers in our community. Um, we are providing our students in science at Emporia High School with opportunities that just continually I hear from my students about how prepared they are. I've, I received three or four emails this year of students thinking uh for what we've done. They get into their classrooms at college and their peers don't know what we've taught them and they are leaps and bounds ahead. And I tell my students on a regular basis, so many doors are going to be open to you because you've chosen to take advantage of these extra science courses. So you can go on and be doctors and um you can get your degrees in nurse practicing. I just had a student come back and speak to all of my anatomy and physiology students in our biomedical innovations class and our honors chemistry class because he graduated from Emporia State um at the age of 21, got his first job in the cardiothoracic unit at KU at the age of 21 and is now applying to be a nurse practitioner. He is a first generation college graduate. He, his parents immigrated here from Mexico and he is the like American dream. And so it was awesome to hear him talk about how having his CNA already and taking advan, uh, opportunity of our CTE courses and our advanced courses prepared him. And then I'd really love to talk about our arts, what we provide at Emporia High School. You will see glass blowing there. We are one of, one of very few high schools in the nation that provide glass blowing. And you also see Ms. Kendall Norberg there working with a torch and that's in our jewelry and metals class. And then down below that, you'll see performing arts. We have a after-school program at the middle school and our students get to go out. My daughter is in the after-school program. She's riding bikes that were donated, that one of the teachers wrote a grant, $25,000 worth of bikes. So these kids get to go out after school and bike around in the community because teachers provide this club and wrote those grants so that those kids had opportunity to do that. And then you'll also see um theater performing there at the middle school. So lots of opportunities. And then at the high school, our theater um received top recognition in the state. And they are um around 200 students total that participate in the various opportunities throughout the year and the performances that are happening in theater. And then over on the left, that's my uh kids' elementary school and um our students there are participating in extracurricular activities as well with StUCO. So really, when I think about what we do and what we saw on our trip, it was opportunities. Your teachers and the staff in the schools are working endless amounts of hours to provide opportunities to our students. And um we love what we do and we are so proud of what public schools do for kids. Thank you.
And then on to Newton. So Newton has been a place that I've continually learned more and more about each of these 11 years that I've been, been able to be a part of it. And realizing how many wonderful things that we have going on. So I want to highlight kind of some of those that we have up there. So in the top left, we've got our jazz program. So last year was the first time that there was the, the state jazz competition. And Newton, I've known, has always had a phenomenal jazz program, but we came away with first place last year, which is an amazing honor for just such a unique group of kids that work hard and put in the time every day to be able to get that recognition and be able to showcase their skills um is wonderful. Then we've got then the, the Kansas Teacher of the Year team there highlighted after that. And then the third picture over to the right is my sister, who is an elementary teacher at uh Northridge Elementary in Newton, Newton Schools. And one of the unique things about Newton is we have science as a specific pullout. So they have as a special. So they go to uh science class, like they would go to PE or art or music and those, and that frees up the opportunity for my sister and the other science teachers, specifically at the elementary level, to really hone in on Project Lead the Way and getting activity-based work so that students are able to build these skills. So when we were there, we worked on looking at aerodynamics and building paper airplanes and seeing who could shoot theirs the furthest. And although mine was not the furthest, it was okay, it was Carly, it's fine. Um, my competitive spirit died a little bit, but it's okay. Uh, but being able to, to see just the fun that and joy that those kids are having for science at such an early age um unlocks those opportunities because you see what is there. Um, bottom left then, we've got a Scholars Bowl um that's there. Scholars Bowl has been able to do really great things in these past number of years. Scout, the Scholars Bowl team at Newton has been league champions, five out of the past seven years. We have been state qualifiers, three of the pa, or three years straight. Um, uh, placing at each of those times that we've been there. We've placed at numerous tournaments other than that. And just being able to see a lot of the students that are my Scholars Bowl team aren't involved in some of those activities that get recognition all the time. So being able to again, see more kids receive recognition for the talents and the skills that all kids have, that aren't always those talents that we, that we think to first. Um, that's one of the things that I think is great um about that program. The bottom middle then, Newton has an exceptional CTE program, college and career um readiness program. There we have uh Brian Rickert, who a couple of years back was a semifinalist for Kansas Teacher of the Year. And he is working with the intro to industrial tech class. And that far right picture, you can see something that they created. So in this class, they're manufacturing from the first step to the final step, to where their engineering class built the design for how a product would look. And then they moved to a different class that built all of it from scratch. So they're able to leave school knowing how to produce products, knowing how to produce things. Um, things that aren't represented here, just because they're very represented, or very recent. Newton's uh women's teen tennis team just was league champions for the first time ever. Newton's soccer team um is 12 and 2 and is having another exceptional run. They were fourth at state last year. Um, so there, there are great things that are going around all across Newton schools. And as we look at, at what that represents for Kansas as a whole, the, the statement that I have there is connections, they're the foundation of public education. The more that we're interworking within each of our districts of all these great things that are happening, the more we're building connections. The more that we're able to present and highlight public education around the state, the more we'll build, we're building connections. When I think about public education and what makes this profession great, I think about something that Jessica had mentioned earlier, how she started out not having a ton of confidence with speaking, but she had the supports of the seven of us that were able to build that confidence up. And that's what public educators do. We instill confidence in our kids that are coming through our classrooms. We help them see that they can do hard things. We help them see the possibilities that are there so that they know what their futures can look like. And we help them ensure they have the skills to attain those futures. And that's the crux of public education. And the crux of the Kansas Teacher of the Year program is that it's a place where we can highlight public educators and lift them up in the same way. Because the more we lift up educators, the more we're able to also lift up our schools and our kids in turn. So I want to thank each of you again for giving us this opportunity. It has been the journey of a lifetime and we're so proud to have been able to get to know each of each other and spend all this time. And with that, with any time left, we would invite any questions you have about the year or for us as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your presentations. We do have some questions. I'll start with Betty Arnold.
Good morning and thank you all for being here. Uh, it's always good to hear um from you. It's really interesting when you talk about um how you're, how you were revived by your visits and what has happened. Now, it, it, there's a point in my saying that because as each of you were talking, I listened to perhaps some key things that you were bringing out, such as teachers struggling with morale issues, how there were things in your district that had you not been given this opportunity, you may not be aware of, which made me think of connections. So one of the things I would love to see us uh commission you because you are considered Teachers of the Year and, and expert, expert in certain areas, is to look at um the connection problem that we are having. Teachers, certainly you are aware of what you bring to the table. Certainly you are dedicated to those students that you work with. But on the flip side, you have to acknowledge that public confidence in education is dwindling. So not only do we have a morale issue with teachers, we also have that morale issue from the public. As a result, we are seeing less individuals that are looking at teachers as, teaching as a profession. I think it would be great if uh we could start hearing from those teams ways that we could reinvent the energy or reemphasize the energy, not that you have for the profession, but how do we bring the public along? Certainly I am aware that we're looking at perhaps a lot more grandparents as parents. And so many of them will go back to how they were taught. And, and so there's a disconnect problem there. Things of that magnitude, it would be wonderful if as you uh are traveling that you look at some of those specific areas and make the, the recommendations or suggestions on not only how we can improve the morale for teachers, but how we can carry that out to the public, how we can uh re-energize or, or get that faith restored in public education. And what you bring to the table, how critical you are to the economical process. My list could go on and on and on. But uh certainly at your level, that would be something I'd love to commission the Teachers of the Year with to perhaps maybe bring us some suggestions on ways that we could, excuse me, make those kinds of improvements. But thank you again for all that you do and, and certainly know that we, we appreciate you.
Thank you. A couple of things that I, that I thought about as you were saying that, because I think that's, that's really important. Um, one, I think having these teacher education prep programs in high school already, before you get to the college level, is important. So they see this as the opportunity of something that they can go into alongside those other careers. And I see more and more schools doing that, so I think that's great. Another piece is you talked about strengths. So often I think we get caught up in not recognizing our own strengths because we're looking at others' strengths, but we aren't telling them. One of the questions that we had as a finalist for Kansas Teacher of the Year is, what are, what are three strengths that you would identify yourself with? And I think we were all surprised at how hard that was because we don't take time to realize. And I know one of the things that Jamie Swindler always says is she's in education because somebody told her in fifth grade, man, you have a gift of being able to work with kids like this. I just see you light up and pointed that out. And it shifted her career entirely where she hadn't realized that. So I think the more we can tell people the strengths that we see and highlight this profession, it's a way to give them excitement about the potential of going into this. Um, and then just taking that celebration and, and sharing it out as much as we can. So we're writing our narrative and that gets across to the public in the same way.
Several more questions, Anne.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for, for all you do. Uh, my last job in teaching was 45 years ago and I was the physics teacher at Emporia High. So that was probably before you were born, come to think of it. But anyway, since then, I've been very, very involved in career and tech ed. And I noticed a common theme throughout most of your presentations where how important it is for kids to be able to explore careers while they're still in high school, not only to maximize their experience and, and to keep them engaged and in school, but also, as you mentioned, to help them see the future. So I'm wanting to hear a little bit more about how important you think career exploration is and the availability of career paths, so we can like grow our own for one. And maybe a little bit about how local businesses can get more involved in that? Thank you.
I teach in the health science pathway and across the hall, my colleague Matt, he teaches in the biomedical innovations pathway. And we also have ag in the science wing and engineering. So I have CTE all around me and um I can tell you that our students get out to job shadow in the medical field to see things that they would never have been able to explore. Um, our students, we have 30 students that will complete a CNA program this year. Um, and so they will have a certificate. Um, I see that in lots of ways because I teach anatomy and physiology and I have 75 students and they come to me with all abilities. Some of them, their goal is to have a CNA and to um earn a CNA wage. Um, and they don't have goals beyond that. Some of them want to be medical doctors. And so for me, what I love about CTE is that it helps students leave high school with either an entry-level career or it could be the career that they choose. And um there really isn't anything better than that. When I'm talking to my students, their, you know, their parents don't have a certificate that gives them a starting wage of $20 an hour at 18. Um, that is incredible. And then in addition to that, we help them see the path forward if they do choose to go on. So if they want to be a licensed professional nurse, they can go across the street to the Flint Hills Technical College. And if they want to be an RN, they can go to Emporia State. And so many of our students, being um a district that serves a high um population of low SES students, having the opportunity to get post-secondary education in the community that you live is essential. And so we have to help them see how they can stay right in Emporia, have the support of their family and get that education. So for me, um, it's, it's been a game changer for the relevance of what I do and it's been a game changer for relevance for students.
And in, in my district in Hutchinson, we have actually started, we piloted a internship program for sixth graders because we were realizing there's so many opportunities for high school students in CTE. Um, however, what are we doing for those middle school and elementary kids? And so we started what we call the Career Quest and we realized that there are so many opportunities in our own district, I mean, in our own community that I had no idea even about. So as I got to go with these sixth graders, I was like, whoa, I pass this business every day? I don't even realize what they do. And so we are exposing, sometimes just exposing them and allowing them to see like, oh, I do like science and maybe I can go work in this trade, you know? And so we also have started um letting students explore through leadership time in our school. And so I had the design team. And so I have some kids that come in and they're learning that maybe they'll never be designers. But I have a sixth grader this year that we're, we've been tasked with the idea of recreating the HNEA logo because it's a very outdated. And I have a couple that I think he could have um potential in graphic design or something. And so just letting them know that even though you're 10 and 11 and 12, that you have these talents. And if we never take the time to let them explore, and even if they realize, I hate this, or maybe it's just a hobby, that well, maybe we'd never know. And that's why I, I think like, what could I have become today had I had these opportunities? I love what I do, but just playing around with a 20-minute class every day and learning like, oh, I'm really good at design. Or I, we have a student ran business and we have a couple who realize, okay, I'm really bad at counting money, but I love public, like serving people. So one- So, one kid asked me to help him learn to count money and just taking those skills upon themselves.
Yeah, I know some people will say, oh, my gosh, if you start talking to kids about careers at sixth grade, you're pushing them into a career they don't want, but I see it more as being able to eliminate ones you don't want and finding your strengths and that's really what kids, our CTSO students have said too, you know, give me the chance to look at a lot of things.
Well, Anne, it allows them to, like, if they're not good at math and science, we need to tell them that maybe that's not a strength, maybe you won't be a doctor, you know? What are your strengths so we can find out what they're passionate about?
Well, and I was just thinking, like, even at three, I can expose kids to that. So, like tomorrow, we're going to the fire station and so, you know, I'm going to have 28 kids that want to be firefighters tomorrow, but like we also have a coffee shop and she roasts beans and Julia will donate beans to me when we learn about the letter B, but then they can be like, oh, this smells good or like my mom and dad drink coffee, so even making connections to their family members. And so, like our fourth and fifth grade go to the bank and they learn about baking and then, like I know our middle school goes to city office to learn about what they do. So, just, I mean, even at three, they're exposed to careers during September, that's Johnny Appleseed Week and so we make applesauce in my classroom and my kids were like, this is really good, Mrs. Keith, like you did a good job. And I was like, I didn't do that because I have the crank thing that like coarses it and all that, so they did that. And I was like, you did that? And then they were like, we did do that. And so, then that led to a conversation like, if you like that, you could be a chef and talking about what a chef is. And so, even at three, you can expose kids to careers. So, I think you can do it whenever and it's great for everyone because then too, like I have my son this year, which is a different story, but he came home that night and he was like, can I help you cook dinner? So, I was like, sure. And so, you know, they're taking some of that home too with their families and think of just families connecting, which sometimes doesn't happen. So, I think it, I mean, it just benefits so much more than just the kids sometimes.
Michelle, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation today. It was awesome. I was encouraged by you saying, getting outside of Blue Valley, getting outside of Lewisburg. I was very encouraged to hear the uniqueness of going on across Kansas because I think we need to stay with that uniqueness and what you're doing great and what you're doing great and highlight those things, but the uniqueness of them. Rather than the commonalities and how common we are, I want to hear the uniqueness of what's going on and expand on that within your own communities and I encourage you to continue to do that and then celebrate that with others across the state so that they know, hey, we're doing this and everybody doesn't have to be the same. We can be unique because Kansas is unique across the whole state. I appreciate your presentation today and letting us know about that. Thank you.
Dennis.
Thank you. Just thank you for coming. It was just a blessing to hear from you again and Brian and Carly and Mallory, you kind of surround me. I'm at Yoder, I'm in, you know, in the middle of your spoke wheel there. So, thanks what you do. I just, I'm encouraged too, the excitement you bring to teaching, I think that really is, it's infectious. And I just want to, and there is a career expo at the state fairgrounds, I think, two Saturdays, on the last Saturday of the month, so encourage any, anybody within driving distance to come to the state fairgrounds. Yeah, yeah, that'd be a good thing. It'd be a lot of vocations represented there. Then also, I just want to invite any of you or your friends to come to a breakfast that's going to celebrate teaching in Wichita this Saturday. You can talk to me about that afterward, nine o'clock. So, we'd love to see there and celebrate you. So, okay, thanks for being here, appreciate it.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you and congratulations and, but the big thank you is for what you do for students. But, a little different here, probably each one of you has a story about why you became an educator and probably in that story, there's someone who motivated you or inspired you or challenged you. I'd give you this moment if you want to do a shout out to someone who has made a difference in your life and your teaching life especially. I'll just tell you, the guy that I, Pat McGonigal was my guy, freshman year of high school, English teacher.
My shout out goes to my sixth grade teacher who inspired me to believe in myself. I was not a high-performing elementary student. I had a star brother and I just kind of accepted the role of average younger sister, but she believed in me and told me that if I tried harder, I could be successful. And actually, she is back working in Emporia Public Schools now after retiring and coming back as a counselor and so I got to see her recently, but I told her many times how that one moment changed my life.
For me, it was Ms. Laura Pullman, my junior history teacher, that just pushed my--
Oh, history teachers.
Yeah, just pushed my limits and I was a history major because of that. It pushed my limits of what I could do and helped me see different possibilities and I think that just highlighted the connection importance. I'm in education because of a connection that someone made with me and I think everyone is in the profession they are in because of a connection. So, connections are important because it brings someone into something that they can do and if we don't make the connection, they're going to find a connection elsewhere, so.
I'll just say, mine goes to my second, third grade teacher, Mrs. Anderson, and I say second because I was one of those struggling students that was pulled out of class all the time and I stayed in third grade for two years. They kept me back. But, the second year I was in third grade, I had a teacher who sort of highlighted what was special about me and what I could do instead of what I couldn't do. And so, that's what I bring to my classroom every day is looking for what you can do. We're not going to talk about what you can't, I'm going to help you with those, but I want to highlight what you can do.
For me, it was my third grade teacher, Dorothy Coder. She was just amazing and the connection that she made with me, she just made me feel special and she brought learning to life. And I remember I was struggling with a concept in reading and when I finally got it, I mean, she threw the party and she just got up and shouted to the earth and like, it was crazy and I felt so special in that moment and it lit a spark in me of wanting to help people as well.
I wanted to be a teacher because of my elementary art teacher, Mr. Gordon. I didn't love math, I didn't love reading and so art days were my favorite days. The magic in his room, he completely transformed his room into magical jungles and all kinds of things and I knew that I wanted to be someone like him that had a room that made kids want to come to school.
Mine were a combination of two teachers. One was like our IT person who was in charge, her name was Ray Niles, and then my art teacher in high school, but those two just saw something in me. I grew up in a pretty traumatic household under the poverty line and so they just let me know that I was capable. And one day, the Ray Niles came to me and she said, did you know you are seventh in your class? And I said, okay, and she goes, that means you're really close to being valedictorian. And had she not pulled me aside to tell me that, I don't think I would have worked hard for that. And then Nancy Todd Hunter, my art teacher, she was the one that told me, you know, you can apply for college and leave Cedric, Kansas, you don't have to stay. And I don't think if it was her, I would have even thought, like, I didn't know how to apply for FASF or I didn't know how to do these things and no one was teaching me. So, for her to just say, this is what you do and this is how you do it and you can do it even if you come from under the poverty line.
I've been trying to think, I can't necessarily narrow it down. I went to college pre-med and then I started working with kids at the Wichita State Child Development Center and I was like, I like kids, so I'll go into pediatrics. And then I had to get, pick a major, so I was like, I guess I'll do elementary education so I can learn about kids and then like while taking all my science classes. And so, anyways, I got into a classroom and I called my mom crying when I was a junior and I was like, I think I want to be a teacher. And she was like, then go be a teacher. And so, and then, so then where I am today, like I think back on, I've had so many teachers bless me and coaches too because I was an athlete and so I think it's just a culmination of so many people who have impacted my journey that, I mean, I wouldn't be where I am today without so many of them.
You all are so inspirational. You're fantastic public speakers. You've obviously had an amazing year. I do kind of wonder where in the process they tell you, you're going to get to give a million speeches, right? And if there's that moment, am I wrong? Okay. But, I'm definitely going to take away the you have a gift of, because what I hear from all of you is you're telling students all the time, you have a gift of, and so you all have a gift of great courage and generosity and thank you for being here and thank you for sharing with us today. I think the commissioner has a few words.
Yes. And Madam Chair, what greatness, greatness. Michelle Kendall knows this, not only, you know, did she expand from the east to the west, we brought her back from Missouri. So, let's, right? But, at the moment that in all of your districts, someone said, I think you're going to be maybe the Teacher of the Year in Cheney or in Lewisburg or, right, in Emporia, wherever that was. As you know, you were a winner at that moment and you went, ah, don't know about that. And then, of course, you became then like the, you know, the semifinalist and I don't know about that. And then, they told me I may have to write a speech, remember that moment? And then the finalist and then, you know, you became this team. And so, as that journey goes, you know, now for the full year, it's this greatness that you have that you get to share and that you've gotten now to see so many classrooms. I tell people this all the time, this is so true of our students, you're limited by your experience, right? And the more experiences you have, the broader your perspective. All of you talked about, in my own district, I didn't see the, you know, the middle school or the elementary or the high school because I'm so focused on my grade level and now you've gotten to see all this remarkable work. So, it's, it has been a journey that you have just knocked it out of the park and we are just so grateful for your talents, your efforts, your time and as we've just said, your greatness, so thank you.
Thank you all again. We're going to take a, let's see, how much time do we have? We'll take a 10-minute break, be back at 10:10.
You want a picture?
Oh, and we should do a picture, thank you. Coming to Cheney. All right, coming to Cheney.
And the important, and the value and importance of working together and the importance of a bias for action. And, and we all, we all look forward to continuing that. We think we've got some strong momentum. Last year, we, we worked together on teacher shortage. We worked together on the science of reading, which is also a board goal. And we worked together on the, the federal, federal application for free student aid, what is usually called, lovingly called FAFSA. And I always have to think about what it, what it means. So all things we worked on, worked on together. Your leadership was at our meeting last month and I thought we had a great session. They did an impressive job. I told them, "We would just hope we'd be almost as good when we got here with you all today." And our board walked away very much seeing the alignment we have and the importance of doing things. But also, again, that we're, we're moving from that phase of talking about, "We should do something to trying to accomplish things together." And that's, that's really important. Now, not that any of us need help in, in knowing that, but at our last board meeting, we had a presentation from the Institute for Policy and Social Research at the University of Kansas, which was, it was really interesting. I encourage you all to go out and look at that. But one of the things it showed us was that the vast majority of jobs between now and 2030 are going to require some sort of post-secondary training and knowledge. And again, we all, we don't all need to have encouragement about that, but that helps us recognize again how it's important that seamlessly we all work together for how we can help everybody accomplish their unique potential. Everybody will get to what their unique potential is in their own way, but I think it's beyond a shadow of a doubt that if we work together and we do the things we should do, that we can help everyone reach those, those potentials. And so Dr. Lane's going to talk to us about a couple of our initiatives that we think well-fit with that idea of student success and help support our strategic plan. So Dr. Lane, if you would.
Thank you, Region Ice. Great to be here. And it was really inspiring to hear from our Teachers of the Year team. And I love that message. It's about team. And so that's, that's why we are here today, to ask you to join us and strengthen our team, our collective team, to do great things for kids. They also talked about opportunity and connections. And I thought, wow, they, they did a great job segueing to, to our part of the agenda today. So thank you for that. It's a real pleasure to be back here before this body, one that has really shaped opportunity for me over time and encouraged us to do great things for kids and for families. And that's what the, the proposals that we want to talk to you about today are all about. So there are three things. One, structured literacy. I'm going to look at Mr. Porter as he smiles on that. The second is what we call Diploma Plus, graduating every high school student with more than their high school diploma. Specifically today, we want to talk to you about concurrent and dual enrollment and opportunities to move that forward. And the third thing is just to make sure that you're aware of our system-wide general education transfer courses that are now fully operational in place. And so I'll fill you in on, on that in a moment. So first, structured literacy. As we think about the work that you all have been leading in literacy, one of the things that the board and our team began to talk about was, how tuned in are we to our obligation as higher education to ensure that every teacher, in-service teacher, pre-service teachers, which is really our lane, are experts in the area of structured literacy? So with your help, this last summer, let me back up. We formed an educator workforce, task force, to bring us recommendations on what do we need to do in order to recruit and retain more individuals into the profession. One of the recommendations they brought back to us was a focus on structured literacy. So we began working with your team on what might that look like. And as you know, this past summer, we launched some training opportunities that were done virtually with the help of your team on structured literacy, with the thought that this is a tool to help inspire our teachers, to give them the tools that they need to understand how to ensure that every child becomes a literate citizen. So great success. Thank you for that work. Eight hundred teachers participating. They participated in over 1,600 hours of videos on this topic, structured literacy, broken down by each of the components. They participated in 10,240 hours of coursework and instruction. And on top of that, they spent time working on how to develop lesson plans so they could walk into their classrooms in August with the tools they need to meet the needs of every child. So that was terrific. But it's one tool, one step. We're here today to talk to you about and invite you to be partners in next step for our Regent universities. We have analyzed the curriculum maps for where is structured literacy taught in all of our curriculum. We know that you've done that work as we hear you talk about that when you're approving programs. We've done the same. And we've come to the conclusion that what might be missing for our pre-service teachers is the application piece. How do we really know that a teacher can walk into a classroom for the first time and have the skills and knowledge about how to put all those components together to be a successful teacher in literacy? So our next move is to develop two courses that are fully focused on structured literacy, that bring all those components together, that are all about application. Those two courses then would lead to standardizing our outcomes across all of our Regent universities. So you will see them as the same, two courses that are universal across our universities that are the same, that focus on application. And the outcome of those two courses is a micro-credential for that educator saying that you have the skills, the knowledge, and the application ability in the area of structured literacy. So we want to invite you into that work. We want to invite you into a vision that says Kansas leads the nation in producing teachers who are experts in literacy. I mean, that's really where we want to go. And we know that we have shared obligation in that work. So let me pause before I go to our second initiative that we want to talk to you about and ask for your questions.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Thank you. By the way, I'm extremely excited about that because, you know, one of the things that I've said that we're not, that I'm not going to vote for any program unless it can be proven that, that they're doing what it needs to be done with structured literacy. And that, that micro-credential is just fascinating. What do we need to do? I may be asking this, what do we need to do to partner in this area?
Well, continue, continue some of the work you're doing because I heard your most recent meeting where I heard you talking about work samples and those kinds of things. But first of all, think about Lyssenger. That's, that's under your area of authority. What is in place in Lyssenger that helps us advance this particular focus? That would be one thing. The second thing is to embrace this notion that all Regent universities are going to bring you a literacy curriculum and program for approval and it's the same. So you don't have to wonder what's happening at one of our institutions versus the other, that this is a universal, same outcomes, producing high-quality teachers. That would be the second thing.
And I think from our point, we approve programs other than Regents, that it may be something, we at least need to consider requiring that sort of specificity through our process for everybody. And I think, I'm jumping the gun, Madam Chair, but maybe future agenda items, that needs to be a part of that process because we need, if we are going to be, if we're going to lead the nation, it needs to apply to all. I know that's not your, that's not your lane, but that is our lane. No pun on the name.
I'll get in that lane with you, Mr. Porter. But actually, we embrace that because we want all children in Kansas to be highly literate citizens. And frankly, I think about literacy as a civil right, right? In today's economy and world, if you are not literate, you are left behind. And so we would commit to working with you beyond our, our Regent universities. We'd love to do that. But also, what are some things that we need to be thinking about in that area? Things that you've talked about, areas that you've noticed that we need to improve?
I'm encouraged that we're having the dialogue. I am interested in not just having the dialogue, but then moving forward because we've been talking about, the next thing you're going to talk about, we've been talking about for years and we're, you know, and, and that's what we've done, talk about it. And I'll, I'll wait till you talk about that before I.
Okay.
But, but we need to, we need to develop plans to work together to make sure this happens.
Agreed.
And I don't know how to do that, but.
We'll work with you on, on that specifically. And we have our community college partner here, represented by Heather Morgan, and the community colleges have to be part of this as well. Because as you know, last year, we were successful in getting an articulation of our elementary education program so that now it's universal. You can go to the community college, start your 60 hours, those automatically transfer, and you can finish 60 in elementary ed. And so that's a model that we want to continue. Two other things before I move to the next topic that are part of this recommendation. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry to interrupt you, but I think we do have a few more questions.
Oh.
Do you want to go through those or do you want to proceed?
No, please.
Okay. Dina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was one that I did ask yesterday. It seems as though we've, we're seeing that you're making certain that students have the, who are in education have the background of structured literacy. But one of the concerns that was raised by a legislator in the special education forum was that some of these students are coming out with that knowledge, but they're being placed with teachers who do not have that knowledge. So I'm wondering how the Regents can monitor that, if they can, to make certain that when, when students come out of a university into student teaching, that they're being placed where they're able to use the knowledge they have without someone questioning.
Great point. Very good point. What, what we can do is work with you in partnership on that, that our teacher candidates are placed in student teaching in districts that are fully prepared. And I know you're doing your letters training. That's, that's a great example. So we can work with you in partnership with that so that the student teachers have the experience we need them to have in this issue of application of structured literacy. So I don't see us as monitoring, but I see that as an action item we can work on, on together.
Anything you want to add?
I do think it's worth, Mad, Mad, Dr. Lane, when she was presenting, mentioned the workshops during the summer and the, you know, volunteer nature of that and how many people have participated in that. So I think there's room to be encouraged that there's enthusiasm for the, for the broader group.
And that's a great point, Region Ice. That was not just pre-service teachers. That was teachers in service as well, teachers that are in the classroom today participating.
Right. Thank you.
Well, that is, is very hopeful that, and certainly, we will be glad to work with you to ensure that there at least the districts that accept student teachers have a list of the teachers who have been through the training and are using it in their classroom. Thank you.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I want to piggyback on that, literacy is freedom. I mean, you have the ability to learn throughout the rest of your life if you're learning how to read. And I'm getting excited about the fact that Kansas wants to lead on this. We want to make sure that every kid in Kansas is, is reading. I have a little bit of a concern about, we're trying to do this across Kansas, but yet we have this new teacher compact. So we have teachers that will be coming in from other states. And what is to prevent those teachers from going into a school district? And that maybe is in our, our wheelhouse as far as making sure that they're coming in and they're, they're being held to the same standards that those teachers coming out of Kansas, they've gone to our great universities or our great community colleges. And we're, we're honing in on this and making sure that we're focused on literacy. But yet now we have this regional compact thing where they can come and go just as easily as they come. How, how do we know that they're not coming here temporarily and then we're setting children back on that? So that's, that was my concern is the teacher compact that we just passed as far as other states coming in. And I do know there's great universities across this nation that are awesome at teaching, and they have great universities. But if that's our focus and we're trying to lead the way in Kansas, I just want to make sure that those coming into Kansas are held to the same standards that, that, that we, that we want our teachers to be held accountable to.
We'd be glad to partner with you on that, provide whatever additional education and training those teachers need. And we want to recruit them in, right?
Right.
We have a teacher workforce challenge shortage, so.
But just being held to the same, being held to those same standards, like you have traveling nurses and then you have a protocol at that hospital and they're coming in and they're coming all over. They might be bringing different experiences, but they're also need to be held to a high standard as well, coming into Kansas hospitals.
Of course, as we succeed, then people see that as well. And there's some concept of the whole group coming up together. So, so I think there's that potential also.
And we can lead the way. I mean, I would like to lead the way, but I also want to make sure that those people coming in are held to the same standards.
One of the things, Dr. Lane, and I think addresses Michelle's concern on our end. I think you're the board's leadership, Board of Regents' leadership in the micro credentialing. We'll have a discussion that we briefly had here. You will remember many, many years ago, when I came out of school, I was told almost immediately, when you re-license, because in your undergraduate career, you didn't have any courses in special education, and that's really important. I did take a, a course called Exceptional Child in that day that was required. It may be our discussion is to follow their lead. And when people re-license as an elementary or pre-K teacher, that they have to show evidence as, as you're talking about, about that, that they have, that they have structured literacy training or, or micro credentialing, or they've attended courses. I think there are a variety of ways they could indicate that, so we'll, we'll want to partner together on that.
Great. One more. Jim McNeese.
One more?
For now.
All right. Well, thank you for doing this and taking the role and the leadership of making this happen. I was not a good reader when I was in school. And I was in a school that we basically read everything. God, I was reading books all the time, so I was forced to, to do it. And I enjoyed reading, but I just couldn't do it very well. Then in the 1970s, I took a course because I had to in reading. And from Wichita State. And I could see myself in it. And I became a better reader because I took the course. And I became an advocate. In fact, I almost got my master's in reading. You know, reading opens doors, it unlocks opportunities. It provides a future for students, especially those who don't see a future. Reading is, is just so important and to our state, to, to just the individuals. So this is a really great step that we're taking to coordinate this and work together to make this happen. And it's teachers that are going to make it happen. Every teacher is a reading teacher. Every teacher is a reading teacher. You know, so this is really important as we move forward. We're not going to approve the graduation rate, we're not going to approve education overall, or ACT scores, or any measures that we have until we do a better job teaching reading. So thank you.
You're, you're welcome, but you're also opening the door to the next step. We're focused right now on elementary education, right? But literacy goes across the content. So we'll, we'll think about a future partnership on how we ensure that, that all teachers have the background so they can meet the literacy needs, no matter the content that they teach. So, all right, may I?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Two, two other things related to this particular recommendation. We are in the process of identifying a common assessment to use. Now, there are some common assessments that are nationally produced that we're examining. Our deans are okay with those, but they think we can do better in Kansas. So part of the charge to the deans is that they will be developing a common assessment based on expertise and research that we'll use. But in the meantime, you'll hear us start to identify a particular tool that we'll use as a common assessment for these two courses, right? And then there was one other common assessment. What was the other thought? Oh, when are we beginning these courses? You know, higher ed is not necessarily known for responding with speed. However, based on the experience that we had with the same folks on the task force to align that elementary education program in three months, we know that we can be successful. So these courses will be in place by August 2024. So we're moving quickly. We need your support. I'm glad I found that in my note because that was, that's a big one to share with you. All right, second area for opportunity for us to collaborate. I'm going to use the phrase diploma plus, and when I say that, what comes to mind? Diploma plus. Anybody, please? More stuff? Okay, more, more stuff.
Market value assets. That's what we called them over here.
All right, market value assets, right. So you all have led in many ways, and you know that my body of work for many years has been to say that our students must graduate with more than their high school diploma. Doesn't mean they need a four-year degree. It means they need an additional credential in order to really be prosperous in today's economy. So what does that mean? We have formed a task force and a board goal to take a look at how could we improve access to concurrent and dual enrollment opportunities? So think of diploma plus, one of the aspects of that is concurrent enrollment. With partnerships with our community college and tech college partners, we brought a recommendation to the Board of Regents to say that we want to invite the State Board of Education to jointly develop a policy that requires every high school to offer at least three courses. And Ms. Ma, I anticipate that you'll say it needs to be more, but at least nine college credit hours that are accessible to every high school for all qualifying students. Now, that could be a big charge in some regions, we understand, because they may not have close proximity to an institute, a post-secondary institution. But there are ways that we can work with that for opportunities so that students who are, whose individual plan of study, IPS, says they're on course for a particular career requiring general education courses, that we can offer those in their high school, working with you and, and your teams. Every high school, every student has opportunity for access. We want to suggest that those courses come from our general education system-wide transfer courses. So this goes kind of to the third thing, but want to make sure you're aware that we have over 100 courses now, that we have, the faculty and the campuses have done the work for transfers so that those courses can be immediately transferred to, if they're pursuing a four-year degree. So every high school have access to at least nine hours. Those hours coming from our system-wide transfer, general ed courses. That we can do that in partnership with, with you all and with our community tech colleges and universities. And that those courses, those core courses count, this, this may be a push. We know that you have required that concurrent dual courses count for graduation requirements, I believe. We want to suggest that those should count for core graduation requirements. So if a student is taking English 101, that become their English credit for their junior or senior year. So every high school, access to at least nine hours for qualifying students whose individual plan of study makes sense for that progression. Of course, some of our CTE courses require general ed courses too. So they could be on a technical path and this would be relevant. That those courses count for core credit for graduation. And that we standardize agreements across the state so that teachers are paid the same way. Teachers that are doing this work are, are compensated, that the agreement, the tuition that's charged and all of that is common across our, our state and regions. Now, we also have a unified budgetary request to help fund this, to get it started at $9 million. We are certainly appreciative of Commissioner Watson's support to say that we can find ways of getting this done so the finance do not become a barrier. And the second piece of this that's important is that we want to provide college and career navigators, we just call them navigators, in every high school, working in partnership with our post-secondary institutions so families and students understand how this fits. The last thing I'll mention and then love to hear your feedback is that the committee in this process, and there were members of higher ed, K-12, and community colleges on the task force. This group designed two pathways, starting in ninth grade. One is in education, one is in health, to show how we can create a pathway from high school graduation requirements to CTE, to these general ed classes. And that could be a relevant piece, if not the driver of your individual plan of study, so that folks can see how this all fits together. So I'll pause there. Through a lot at you, but we hope that you'll embrace or help us think through how we can get from talking about expanding dual and concurrent opportunities to actually making it a reality across our state. Jim Porter?
Thank you. I want to go back to the common assessment, and this is talking to us more than to you right now. If, one of the, one of the recommendations, strong recommendations from the dyslexia task force was to require some sort of assessment to make sure that any teacher that is graduating at the elementary level has, has proof. So I really appreciate the fact that they're going to develop that, but I think we need to also expand that to all places where we accredit to make sure that every teacher has, so we can prove that they're available, that, that they have that, that skill. That's, that's, that's not a discussion, that's our, our lane. I want to go back. First of all, you indicated I won't speak for my colleague Anne because she thought that, that she may, she may, she's the next speaker, by the way. She may say that that wasn't enough and I'll join her in saying that. But in the past, first of all, I represent, like several of my colleagues, a lot of students that are in poverty. And the cost, if there is one, would be a barrier. And so as we're discussing this, I would like to also discuss at some point how we can do that in a way that the most vulnerable financially of our students can have the opportunities to be successful in that area. And then a challenge to all of us. We've been here before. We've talked about, we've talked about this for years. And, you know, you're, you're asking for $9 million and there's no guarantee you're going to get it. We have to figure out a way to do this if, no matter what. And I would hope that we can work together to figure out how to make that, make that happen, even in the absence of additional funding from the legislature. End of that sermon.
All I say is amen. Thank you.
And, I mean, we believed it was and is important to demonstrate that if we think something's important, that resources should be associated with that. We don't really intend that it's something that should have to be funded every year. We think this can get us started. To your point about the, the cost of the student, I mean, I think I'd describe this like, there's two pieces. There's the getting the infrastructure in place, so to speak. All the things Dr. Lane talked about, we need to make sure we do so we have consistency and so forth. And then after that, there's, there's the cost of the student. And always at the center, Dr. Lane led this task force that she was describing. Always at the center of that was to make sure that the student that had the needs, the students that had the need for help would be supported. So that would be something we would endure. I believe the Regents have already weighed in on that, that, that we're aligned around that. That's a topic we have discussed at board meetings. But we want to make sure everyone else has, has access also in a, in a way that's appropriate for all of them.
Anne? Thank you. Appreciate the effort on this because, you know, like I said, we've been here before. We had the first 15, 25 million dollars when we got it through the Senate. How many years ago was that? Four years ago, something like that? And then it didn't get through the House. But, I mean, it's absolutely critical that this be at no cost to the student. I hope we all agree on that because other, I mean, there are already a lot of programs out there. You can go to Washburn, you know, or KU for a discounted rate, but that still keeps all the poor kids out. So I think it has to be free. So are you guys thinking we can somehow come up with $9 million without the legislature or we have to go over there? Because if we do, we need a bill like right now in the hopper.
Okay, so when I, when I was at BNSF, I used to say with the five favorite words what Carl meant to say. So Dr. Lane may be ready to do that here, here in a moment. I mean, I, again, we thought, we think this is important enough. It's one of our goals. And our goal is now, is written in a way, we expect to accomplish things, not that we keep talking about it. Again, in the phases of everybody, few people talk about something that everybody does, and then you finally do it. We want to be in phase three and we think we're there. So we do think that was important that to ask, to have put resources in place. I mean, I don't want to start today by saying, okay, well, we really don't need those. We thought we did or we wouldn't have recommended that. Having said that, I mean, we're determined here. We think this is important. And, and so we'll, we'll work towards that. And, and so we'll see how it turns out, but we'll, we won't give up if, if what happens.
So we are going to go to the legislature first or?
We've already recommended that in our unified budget request. So it is, so in the process, if you think of that as three steps, that's step, we, step one is we've recommended it. Step two would be what the governor then puts in her budget. And then three would be the legislative action. So we'll be engaged across that.
But that's the path in, is to put it in your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So we are, so yes, we're asking, but I thought you kind of asked two questions. Well, what if we don't get that? Well, I mean, if we don't get that, we're a little more determined than that. We're relentless. So we'll work on what else we might try to do.
Well, as you mentioned, the community colleges are really critical. And I remember they were really functioned because the previous proposal, we were going to make them take 50 bucks an hour, and they were not very happy about that in terms of reimbursement. But hey, like you said, it's important and, and we just have to make it happen. The only other thing we might need to think about at some point, the commission that accredits colleges is going to require that to teach college courses, you have to have the masters that a lot of high, people in high school who are teaching college courses don't have right now. And they've, they've kind of kicked the can down the road, you know, several times. It was going to be 2023, you couldn't teach, and I always get dual and concurrent mixed up. But when you have the high school teacher teaching the college course in the high school, a lot of them don't meet those requirements right now. And they don't want to go get a masters because they're going, why should I do spend all that money? So another budget item, I'm thinking at some point that you guys might want to consider is helping those teachers who are teaching college classes in high school meet those requirements. So at some point, they don't get the plug pulled and all of a sudden they can't teach them anymore.
You know, this, this task force developed a whole wall full of barriers to success. And then said, let's get this vision out there and make sure that this is something that we believe all Kansans need. And everything points in the indication that we understand that a high school diploma may not be enough, a certificate in a, in a trades area, something. So I, I appreciate that. So we didn't want to lead with the funding, but we know that there are, that's important and we need to sit down and figure out how to make that happen. But we have a request. The second thing about the Higher Learning Commission, you're right, they've been, they were one of the first barriers on that list. It's my understanding, and Heather, we're getting closer to some change in that. So I, I think we'll see some change. But what we can control is being on the, in the boat together, hand in hand to figure this out. And our community college partners are, they're, they're willing. That, that's why saying to all of our high schools, you need to offer these courses. You may not have the faculty to do that, but we do, and we want to work hand in hand to solve that. So we can figure this out. It's important to our kids. It's important to grow the economy.
Cool. I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. The one thing which is not necessarily focusing on a detail, it's just kind of an overview. You were here when you listened to the Teachers of the Year and how somebody believed in them first, which ended with them believing in themselves. What you're doing is giving students an opportunity to start out by believing in themselves. In other words, I took a college-level class and I did it. So from that perspective, you know, I'm, I'm really on board and really. So from that perspective, you know, I'm really on board and really appreciate your developing this. It is something that's truly necessary, because it starts the ball to rolling. There are some details, I know, that will be, that will be worked out. But to believe in the direction that you're going, I'm simply saying, I believe in the direction that you're going. I thank you for that. I look forward to those students who lack the self-esteem to think they can, to learn how, first of all, to believe, and then to dream, and then to realize their success. So thank you for today.
Thank you, well said.
No more questions at this time?
Okay, thank you very much. As you think about this idea of a policy, I want to connect it to your individual plan of study, and frankly, your continuum. Your continuum of opportunities says that you do exploration at elementary, no, awareness at elementary, exploration at middle school, and then you're preparing students at high school. The individual plan of study is critical to this proposal of concurrent expansion, Diploma Plus, because it has to be aligned to what the students' strengths are, what they aspire to do in broad terms. So we think this is also a tool that you could leverage to make that individual plan of study very powerful. So I wanted to leave you with that. Last two things, and they're quick. Wanted to make sure you were aware that we have these general ed courses that are system-wide transfer courses, the same across the whole state, so a student could enter in a community college, complete their first sixty, and go to the university and finish in sixty. Powerful, we think. It's about access, and it's about affordability, because we all have stories that young people have taken courses, and then they end up at the college or the university, and they're told, oh, well, that's nice, it's elective credit, it won't count toward your major. We're working on that. So we have these in place now, there are over a hundred courses that transfer across our entire state. The faculty have been terrific, working in the system to make that happen. Our next step on that is program-to-program articulation, which is what we call that elementary ed example I gave you, that now we have program-to-program articulation, so the elementary education system is the same across our entire system. And our next move in that, working with our community and tech college partners, is to identify the top five majors in our state, and make sure we have program-to-program articulation. So, for example, if a student has interest in criminology, they start this work in high school, they get some of their concurrent, they go to the community college, they finish their coursework at the community college to the sixty, and then they transfer to a university, and all of that fits. So it's building the Hot Wheels track, if you will, for all of our students. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of general ed transfer. And the last thing to be aware of is that November seventh through ninth, free application day. So please help us spread the word that when students apply for a university, November seventh through ninth, there is no application fee, which is a huge barrier. Pittsburgh State already does not charge application fee. Community college already doesn't charge, so we're giving a window of that this fall for families, free application, November seventh through ninth. And don't be surprised if in the next several months, you start hearing us say, free application, period. It's a barrier, it's an access affordability issue. So I wanted to make you aware of those two things. Thank you for your opportunity to be here today, and to work with you in partnership.
Thank you, and I want to follow up, because I did come and speak to the regions, along with Vice Chair Porter. And, you know, when we stood there, we were asking for fifteen credit hours. That's the goal. And the goal is to get opportunities in front of these kids, so that they can see a path to college, even if they feel that that's something that their family can't afford. And so I heard you mention qualified students. Excuse me. And I think that that's really important, that we're focusing on those kids that otherwise would not have the opportunity, and don't see an opportunity for themselves to go to college. And that's where we really need to be laser focused. But I also want to add, as a parent of two high school students right now, those transfer courses, and, I mean, that is such a big deal, to be able to talk about going to a community college and having those courses, those credits transfer to any other university in the state. I commend you for making that happen, because I see that as really, you know, clearing a hurdle for some of those kids as well, so thank you.
I have a, if I may, quick follow-up. When you were saying November seventh, there are no requirements? It's just free to make that application?
Yeah, Ms. Arnold, you're aware that if I wanted to apply to the University of Kansas now, I would have to come up with an application fee, it's probably forty.
I think it's forty dollars.
Forty dollars, well, for the kids who I have passionately served over time, and some in my own family, that forty dollars just says, well, that's not for me. So, right, no application fee.
And it's not like you got to prove that you're in need, it's all?
Nope, no, no application fee.
Okay.
It's exciting, isn't it?
Thank you.
All right. I see no more questions or comments. Thank you again for being here, appreciate it, thank you. Next up, we have Luanne Baron, from the Kansas State School for the Deaf. Apologies that we're running a little bit late.
November seventh, that's fantastic. Is the interpreter's microphone, okay? Good morning, everyone. It's good to be back here in front of you.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second, please. Board members, may we have your attention, please? Thank you.
All right. Good morning once again. Our first quarter of the semester is almost over. We've had a lot going on during our first quarter, and I'm excited to share this with you. Lot of good things are happening at the Kansas School for the Deaf. As you see on my opening slide, you see this series of various tiles. These were created and designed by our students. We had a well-known deaf artist by the name of Alan Mansfield came, and gave a tutorial video to the students, and then let the students have that with their creativity and their designs. The two cultural characteristics of this relate to deaf visual image art, and those two things are the hands and the eyes. That is a strong cultural sense of belonging and valuing of our vision in our hands. So if you ever come to campus, when you come to campus, you'll see that these tiles, they are displayed on a wall. Let's see, where's my mouse to move forward? There we go. Oh. I went to, a lot of work is happening, and has happened, and will continue to take place. This is the important work for our school. The first one is accreditation. As you know, all schools are required to go through the accreditation process. We have less than two years remaining on our cycle, until we are re-accredited through both KISA and CEASD, which is the Conference of Administrators, Educational Administrators in Schools for the Deaf Programs. It's a national organization that does accreditation specifically geared to deaf ed programming. So we have a site team who will come out, and their background is all related to schools for the deaf, deaf ed. And then we also have the KISA accreditation. In the past, the KISA accreditation, that committee, has agreed to allow CEASD to come out and do an accreditation visit as well. We'll be asking for that again, we may want to revisit some things. We are a special purpose school, so we need to have that discussion with using the KISA accreditation, which is just fine. One thing that, if we decide to do this dual accreditation process, it means we will have two teams. So the KISA team, I think we're working on KISA 2.0 standards. I'm going to do the training on that very soon. And then the CEASD, and we are hoping that we can work through and develop a joint visit. So we will keep you apprised as that process begins and gets started. Right now, we have our accreditation committee established, and we are making our preparations. Part of the CEASD accreditations requires that we do twelve to eighteen months of self-study prior to their site visit. So we are making sure that we are planning ahead for this process. In terms of statewide early intervention support, a lot is going on with our birth-to-three early intervention programming. According to the Joint Commission of Infant Hearing, which is the JCIH, there's a supplemental paper that was published in Pediatrics that says that research indicates that the vast majority of infants do best when they are provided with providers who are trained in special techniques for deaf, hard-of-hearing infants and families. So at KSD, we have a program that we call Sound Start. That's our early intervention zero-to-three program. We work in partnership with the Kansas Early Childhood Developmental Services, previously known as the Tiny K Network, to provide specialized supports to providers and families. There are more and more services regionally, and we have been asked to take on providing more direct services, because of our specialized knowledge in working with infants and early kiddos who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. You may be aware that the School for the Blind last year received funding for their early intervention program through the Department of Health and Environment. As that got started, that led KDHE to contact us and asked if we would be interested in running a statewide birth-to-three program for infants who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. Of course, our response was a hearty yes. So at this time, the Department of Health and Environment is developing what's called an issue paper for fiscal year 2025. So they will be asking the legislature for the funding, and it'll go through the similar processes what they just went through with the School for the Blind, with the goal of supporting children who are birth-to-three, who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. So we have our fingers crossed, and hope that the legislature will agree to fund that. And then we will develop an MOU with the Department of Health and Environment. So that's a future opportunity for growth, and providing support to families that are standard and at that same level of high-quality services for our families needing birth-to-three services. Then pathways for hiring and retention. That's been one of several goals that I've had since COVID. There's been the teacher shortage, we've had lots of teachers leaving. And I was watching the Kabor presentation this morning, and talking about how we need more teachers. You know, we experienced the same thing, the same is true in deaf education. Many deaf education programs were closed due to lack of student enrollment within the field of deaf education. And that, we are at a crisis level nationwide. For internal purposes, what we are doing to bring in new young teachers includes through our marketing programs, our networking, contacting student teachers, giving them opportunities to come, complete their student teaching at our school. And then if we have a vacant position, we encourage them to apply. We've been very fortunate. Most of our positions are currently filled, that took place during the summer. So now the importance is to maintain and retain and support these new staff members. Our principals now, as well as our Dean of Student Life for dorms, as well as our Outreach Director, we're looking at retention. And how can we retain great staff, preventing them from moving to other schools for the deaf, or moving out of state? And so we are working on developing creative ideas to retain our staff, to maintain our high-level quality, even in the midst of the nationwide teacher shortage. So this leads to a lot of new young teachers who have just graduated from their university programs, who have now joined our staff. So we are working on developing a robust retention plan. We want to increase our level of mentorship that we're providing. I know the state requires mentorship, but we are extending the mentorship, the length of the mentorship, we're including recognition of staff, as well as celebration days, providing opportunities to attend conferences and professional development, so that our employees feel that they are valued at KSD and want to stay with us. Next on our list, we had our first-ever ASL for All 5K Run, Walk, and Roll. So we just had our first annual, and we had an amazing turnout and a huge success. Here are some pictures from our event. We had a robust turnout from the community. This would not have happened without the partnership between the KSD Endowment and the Museum of Deaf History, Arts, and Cultures, which is right across the street from our campus. We call them our sister organization, since they are located so close to campus. We partnered together in terms of looking for sponsors, in promoting the event and gaining registrants. And this brought both the signing and non-signing communities, deaf and non-deaf individuals, together for one event. As you know, Olathe is one of the largest deaf communities in the country. All of the high schools in Olathe provide ASL courses to their students, as well as in some of the middle schools. So we wanted to create an opportunity for these individuals and their families to network and meet one another. We raised a total of fifteen thousand dollars in our first event this year. And so we are splitting those proceeds between the endowment and the museum. The purpose of these funds, we want to ensure that we have enough funds that we can provide our ASL Family Immersion Camp. That could mean more scholarships, it could mean more focus on increasing our signing communities. So I enjoyed myself that day. We had about two-hundred-and-twenty registrants, plus several volunteers. So pushing three-hundred people turned out that day, we had a lot of fun. The last thing I want to discuss is our statewide visibility and support. I've lost my place in my notes, so give me one moment. Right now, we're in the final stages of developing a parent information packet, information for parents to explain our campus-based program, our outreach services. I want to thank the board for pushing the new language in the Notice of Meeting form, that if you have a child who is deaf, you can invite the School for the Deaf representative to attend that IEP. If you have a student who has a visual impairment, you can invite the Kansas State School for the Blind to do that. I've seen this new language, and this took several years' worth of effort, so I want to thank the board for your support, as well as the team from the Department of Education. So we are developing a packet of information for parents, so if they want more information, we have it at the ready. And once we have our final draft, we will share that back with the board as well. This is to raise visibility and awareness, that we are here to be a resource if parents so request. I'm watching the time, I have two more things that I hadn't planned to mention, but I think I have enough time to mention. Last year, we had talked about the reading program, our reading curriculum. Our ELA teachers and administrators, including myself, we met and reviewed several curriculum vendors to identify the best curriculum program. This morning, we were talking about structured literacy and literacy in general. Most of those programs are developed for children who can hear, and so it takes an additional effort to find something that's most appropriate for children who are deaf or hard-of-hearing. And so we reviewed several different vendors, curriculum vendors, and we chose the American Reading Company as our new vendor. The reason why we chose them is that they are already working with twelve to fifteen other schools for the deaf, and we were hearing very positive comments from those schools that they were getting great gains in reading levels for their students within one year. So this year, we are in Phase One of implementation to getting used to using the materials, the books, how to use the Zone of Proximal Development for the students to find the approximate reading levels, because we do have a wide range of reading levels in our students. So we look forward to seeing results from the implementation of this new curriculum. The last thing I want to announce is that KSD has been chosen to host the 2024 Vox Robotics Tournament for deaf, hard-of-hearing students. This will be hosted on our campus. It's a huge event. We'll have about 25 schools for the deaf coming in. They represent areas all over the US, and we will have a long weekend full of competition for them. Once our competition is complete, they'll learn how to do both autonomous robotics and driver, like remote-control-controlled robotics. So I invite you out to come watch this. It's February 8th through the 9th. Thank you to Kim for giving me the dates for that. Now, moving on to a topic that's a little heavy, but it's also a passion of mine. I want to provide you with just a little bit of context and background information based on something, an issue that was raised probably beginning about 15 years ago. I received a question from an alumni. He said, "Why did I get a vocational certificate instead of a regular diploma?" And I was unaware of the history regarding this. Then, over time, including up to the last few years, I've had an increasing number of alumni come to me, asking the same question and wanting an answer. And so I felt that as a school, we owed them an answer as to why were there two different diplomas. So the picture in here is an example of the vocational certificate that some students received. Those who received a regular diploma, they have a very nice-looking diploma, and this is just kind of plain, the vocational certificate. As I said again, I was receiving lots of contacts, so I reached out to one of our archivists, school historians, and asked for some assistance in doing some research. I know that when I was a student at the Iowa School for the Deaf, we didn't have any particular graduation requirements, but everybody did get the same diploma. I thought maybe that could be part of the issue at hand here at KSD. But based on what we found in reports, in interviews with alumni, there was a lot of mixed messages and mixed information. So I was on a mission to collect facts, and I received permission from alumni who were still alive for me to review their transcripts, to try to help me understand what was happening, to see if maybe they didn't satisfy graduation requirements, or maybe they hadn't earned enough credits to graduate high school. I needed to get at the heart of the matter. I still have a lot more work to do on this. As I checked student transcripts, they did reflect that they had taken a course of study. This began in 1970, the precursor to graduation requirements. So they were taking regular classes, their freshman, sophomore, and junior year. And then in their senior year, all of a sudden, they were put onto a vocational track for vocational training. And as I was reviewing these transcripts, I noticed this pattern. So my assumption is that this was due to a variety of factors, that a lot of the students who came to KSD, came to KSD late, and so they were maybe not able to achieve appropriate academic levels. So they were staying until age of 26. And so they were over age. So in order to dismiss them from education, they gave them a vocational certificate. So that is one factor, potentially. Also, back at this time, students tended to stay at the same school until they graduate. There wasn't a lot of students transferring in. It's becoming common for students to transfer out of state or go back to their home schools. But back in the 70s, they transferred in, and then we would give them a vocational certificate even though they were academically eligible. And we had a lot of students who were deaf who were quite language-deprived and didn't have any language, and this was also happening to a portion of individuals who are also people of color. So I believe you received a letter from one alumni, and you've had an opportunity to read that letter. That's one of many stories, but it is a fairly common story. The alumni are asking for the Board of Ed to give them a regular diploma as reparations and healing. So I bring this before you. I can do more research and bring back more information if you'd like. This is something that I feel strongly about, that it was an inequitable occurrence. And I know historically in the state of Kansas, there was one diploma for all students in Kansas. Or were there any vocational certificates? I had that question. There are certificate of attendance. So... Shall I move forward?
I can actually chime in here real quick. I believe that we can get this on the November agenda. Would love to have you back so that we can have a full conversation about it then, if that would, we can obviously work on schedules, but would love to have you come back and have that conversation.
Sure, absolutely. Would you like me to bring some alumni to give testimony, or would you like for just myself to attend?
We can probably take that offline, but I'm sure that there's an opportunity there, yes.
All right, please let me know. I'll be here in November.
Thank you.
This work is something I feel very strongly about. I grew up in a school for the deaf, and I've seen my classmates not get that same level of access to education. There's many long stories. So again, I do feel strongly about this issue. Thank you for your support. Moving on. I'd like to introduce our new School Resource Officer. She started in May. We have established a contract with the City of Olathe Police Department. And she is amazing. Staff, students, parents have all commented that they feel that the level of security on campus has been elevated in a big way. They feel safer. And we have a person present on campus at all times. And she signs. Yeah, she is signing. She's taking ASL classes. She's amazing. She is a uniformed officer on campus at all times. So the legislature had given us funding for two SRO positions, but the city was only able to give us one. They have their expectations in terms of how many SROs are assigned to the different educational buildings within the city. So we have one on day shift. We're still looking for a second shift. So we're looking for a security company that we could use as a vendor until the city is able to give us that second SRO, uniformed officer. So that's the progress update there. Finally, very good news. One of our audiologists won the Kansas Audiologist of the Year Award. That's equivalent to the Kansas Teacher of the Year Award, I would think. She's an amazing woman. She travels across the state all the time, coordinating what we call our Hearing Assistive Technology. So it used to be known as FM systems. We have a leasing program that we lease technology equipment to school districts across the state for students who have that need. So she travels to provide support, provide trainings on how to utilize the FM system, troubleshooting, any of that. She has a strong passion for those students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing, those who can benefit from that assistive listening technology to have improved their access to audio inputs and how that impacts their educational needs through the use of this technology. She's very involved. She knows almost all the audiologists across the state. She's answering questions for audiologists who maybe have not ever worked with deaf, hard-of-hearing children before, in terms of what are their needs. So we are really proud of her work. So this sums up what's happening at the Kansas School for the Deaf. Lots of good things, as you can see, are happening right now. I'm open for questions.
Start with Betty Arnold.
Thank you so much. I have a question, and I think you might be able to give me a little bit of insight on that. There was a study of non-deaf babies learning how to sign and how that helped them in the communication process, that it excelled their learning ability. Then that went by the wayside, so I've never heard anything else about that. And I am just wondering if you have any information. I thought of that because you were talking about low enrollment, and so it's an opportunity to look at other ways that we might be able to utilize the services.
I'm curious as to the low enrollment.
Okay, when you were saying that as far as the school experiencing low enrollment, and I may have misunderstood that, but it just sparked the question for me. Do you see being able to develop that where...
Let me clarify your question. Are you saying or stating that KSD, our on-campus programs, has a low enrollment?
No, I'm not stating that, no.
Okay.
I am asking for input on future potentials. If she's heard any information about how non-deaf children learning how to sign, if that has helped them excel in regular academics.
I think I understand your question. You're right about the benefits of non-deaf infants learning how to sign, and they can do that prior to learning how to use spoken language. And there was an increased level of interest in that for hearing students to learn that language. Now, in terms of impacts on academic acceleration, the research shows that children who know more than two languages do tend to excel in their academics in general, regardless of which two languages those are. Could be Spanish and English, ASL and English, any other languages. So those who are bilingual or know more languages, they do better than monolinguals. I know there is a high interest across the state for hearing students, and that's great. For our focus at the Kansas School for the Deaf, we are responsible to find the students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing, catch them early, and really provide them with early language, ASL and English, one or both of those languages.
And I just, it was kind of curious. I had heard that, and then it fell by the wayside and never heard any more about it. So I just thought she'd have some input on that. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
The, one other thing, I promise, just one. Mr. Porter and I both had talked about looking at ways for special schools to recognize their staff members, such as how we do with Kansas Teacher of the Year. We brought that up at a meeting. I don't know if there were any other board members that were interested in that, but I certainly like the idea of celebrating those individuals that are doing an exceptional job. And until something is in place, I appreciate you bringing them to our attention.
I would love to have recognition. In fact, we did have, one of our teachers did win Kansas Teacher of the Year a long time ago. I think that was back in 2000, I think in 2000. Around that time, we had one. It is hard to get into that competition with other schools. So it would be nice if there was something for special schools' recognition. That would be nice. And it would spotlight and recognize our wonderful staff, and that's always appreciated. Anne.
Thank you. Had a counselor who wanted to have the School for the Deaf at an IEP meeting for a student who they thought either should go to the school or get services from the school. And her administrator would not allow that. I think they were concerned. Things would look so good, they would lose that student to your school. So I'm curious as to how parents would go about making sure you guys are there if they want you there. Is there a process in place for that?
Thank you, Anne. Yes. That is a common story. So if either myself or outreach coordinator is contacted, we will provide some advice to parents in those situations in terms of what to do next.
Okay.
They can contact families together. There are a variety of things. We try, our goal is to work in collaboration with school districts, regardless of where they are in the state, to develop those relationships. That's what we've really been focusing on the last few years, and we're getting closer and closer. Things have improved. But yes, there are always those situations that arise where school administration is not wanting to invite a representative from KSD to those IEP meetings. But we do see a decrease in that occurrence. But, and again, in that Notice of the Meeting, parents have the right to invite us to the meeting. So that's going to help that a lot, and they can request for information be provided to the district. And so that is there, that parents can invite a representative to those meetings. So the language is there in the Notice of Meeting, and so that's where I would refer back to.
Very good. Thank you.
One more for me. Might be kind of a long one. But you started out by talking about pathways to hiring, and you touched on the 5K, and I started to draw the connections and how important it is for young people who are considering becoming teachers, especially in this area. They need to be able to see deaf students and experience ASL. And so my first question for you was going to be, how can we help? But it sounds like there are probably a lot of community opportunities through the 5K, maybe other events at the school. So I would just encourage you to reach out to the board. And particularly, I want to recognize Michelle Dombrosky, who is the board's liaison with KSD. And so Michelle can also bring us information back. But it's interesting for me to hear that you've partnered with the museum, because I've had folks who live in the Olathe area say, "What is the story with the museum? Is it tied to the school? Can we go tour the school?" I've heard from some. So if you have any opportunities that you would like to share now, that'd be great. And in the future, I would just encourage you to let us know so that we can help increase that visibility. Pause there, and then I have another part of the question.
You're right about the 5K. There were many reasons behind hosting that event. We have been looking for opportunities. And obviously, there are lots of opportunities. But to have, we had several graduate students from KU's audiology program came and participated in the event. So not only does it focus just on teaching, but also audiology and related services. We also had a large number of student interpreters who were interested in becoming ASL English interpreters, attended, because there aren't enough interpreters for deaf and hard-of-hearing students and individuals within the state. There is a shortage there. So some districts have hired signing pairs rather than qualified interpreters. So, some districts have hired signing pairs rather than qualified interpreters. They're not qualified to interpret because they don't have the credentials to do so. So, this was an opportunity for that. Again, people in the community who may be interested in working for the dorm. Finding staff to staff our dorms has been, especially the second and third shifts, have been historically hard to recruit employees to that. So, you know, when we meet new individuals and, oh, you can sign, why don't you, we have these openings, you could come do that. So, as the 5K grows, we are hoping that that draws a more general, broader audience, that this is not just for deaf people or only for specific groups. This is for a shared signing community. This event really helped us visualize that, and we expect it to grow and become bigger. And so, we are looking for opportunities to network. Individuals had contacted Kim, you know, they, we have interpreters who either want to practice because they're student interpreters, or they just wanted to observe the interpreters at work during the event. So, that's just one example. We want it to not be just local to Olathe, but draw individuals from Wichita or other towns where there are people who could benefit from the same opportunity to come up and participate.
Thank you. My follow-up is not really a question. It's more of a, it's a question for the department. I would be curious to learn more about ASL opportunities for students across the state. So, which districts, which schools are potentially offering ASL as a foreign language, or even just learning about clubs, which I realize may be more challenging data to collect. But I think that that's something that the board can keep a closer eye on, is what do the opportunities look like outside of the school as well? And I don't see any more questions here from board members. So, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Board members, do we, yeah, you can clap. Do we need a break? Head nods? Want to keep going? I see a head nod. Okay, we will take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 11:40.
Welcome back, and welcome Superintendent John Harding from the Kansas State School for the Blind.
Thank you, Board Chair. Thank you, Board. Is the microphone working? Can't tell. I think. Now it is, okay.
There we go.
All right, I'll be quick, otherwise, I'll start getting questions about the Activities Association, and I don't, I don't want those questions. My date's wrong here, I apologize. I'm a date off, a day off, a day late maybe, and a dollar short, as they say. But thank you for giving me a few minutes. This is School for the Blind, Kansas City, Kansas, but we serve the whole state. We say that a lot. People ask me all the time, how many kids are at your campus? And I always present these three numbers in any presentation. There's at least 1,500 kids in this state who are blind or low vision, significant enough to impact their education. We serve in one way or another, 800 of those kids across this state, and then we have approximately 50 kids on campus. So, we're small by design, so our campus is an intensive placement option, short-term placement option. But these are the staff who do the work. If I wish, they could come and be here because they deserve the credit. Luann talked a little bit about getting our name out there. That's always a challenge. I often say, you can build an escalator, but people still want to take the stairs. They don't know about you. How do you get them to know about you? This is just a one-page get-to-know-us. If you want to know us, if a parent wants to contact us, if a superintendent wants to contact a teacher, they can go here, and that will hook them up with a QR code to our website and a place where they can fill out a service request if they want some specific help. But the department is sharing that with us, and we're grateful that they're willing to do that, and this is what we're disseminating across the state. Our numbers for last year, as you know, there's 286 districts. Last year, we served 100 of those school districts, so 35% of the school districts in Kansas have been touched by our services in some way or another. The pie chart just shows what we're doing. We do assessment services, we do direct teaching services, so Braille instruction, orientation mobility instruction. We do sometimes Meet for Placement, talking about where's the best placement for a student. We also do a lot of consultation services and training. Did I miss a slide there? No. So, our strategic plan really rolls into KISA. We've been hearing a lot from Dr. Jay Scott and his team about KISA. We're paying attention to. There has to be alignment between what you're always doing to improve yourself and what KISA is. What good is, you know, a certificate unless you're constantly doing it at your school anyway? We should be doing these things. So, we are constantly collecting data and then aligning it with our own strategic plan. So, we're looking to empower, really inform families. I think this is the thing where we've been lacking over the years, is being unafraid to say, here's what we do, here's the skills your child should have at this age, and here's where you can get some help, whether it's us or not. And they can make those good decisions, and IEP teams can make good decisions, but only if they know what their choices are. So, we kind of pulled the covers off of that and said, we're going to inform teams and inform families and let them make good decisions. Access is a constant struggle for our kids and getting quality services. We believe in inclusion, but that's just a word unless you have the supports and services at the local district that will allow that student to make progress. We want to innovate, we want to take risks. We tell our kids, you have to take risks. We talk about the dignity of risk. We have to take risks as an organization too, and be unafraid to fail or to be criticized for doing something that didn't work. So, we're really trying hard to do that. And then, we want to engage our community, not just KCK, but the entire state. We want to be out in Dodge City, we want to be out in Hutchinson, we want to be in Wimigo, we want to be in Pittsburgh, we want to be out. The magic formula is having programs on campus and then taking those programs in some shape or form out to the public schools and the community. Our primary job is academics, like at any school. For those kids who come to our campus, we're focused on structured literacy too. So, we've been using Wilson Reading as our structured literacy approach. It's an intervention for struggling readers. We had four teachers. We had four teachers who were trained in that. We have to adapt it for Braille users or large print users. We do Ames Web interim assessments, so we just completed our fall interim assessments in math and reading, which we're really trying to, as administrators, get our teachers to say, "What is that test data telling you? And then what are we going to do about it if it's not working?" And we want to share that data with parents, right? And no matter how small those gains are, we want those parents to know where they're gaining and what they are still working on. We're seeing some improvements, which is amazing for us. We're just looking, not aggregate so much, but each individual student, we only have 50 students, each one, are they making progress in those areas? And we are seeing some gains on the English Language Arts side. For math, students were assessed formerly with a measure which required multiple choice tests, so we've kind of moved away from that, a little bit different way of assessing. Math is so hard for our kids, but we're also committed to making that work, so we're looking at, what's the corollary, you know, maybe to a Wilson Reading program for math? Have we found the right tools to move kids forward in math? So, still looking hard at that. We are part of the Accreditation Advisory Council, so we got an opportunity to participate in that. There is an option, as you know, for state and special schools, so we'll be meeting with the team November 9th. We've scheduled a one-to-one meeting with the department to say, "Is our strategic plan on track? Is it going to make, you know, is it aligned with KISA? Is it student improvement, student-focused? Are we informing parents? Are we collecting data?" So our team is really, we think, in a good position, getting ready for next year and beyond for KISA. Our outreach department is comprised of two sides. We have the 3-21 Part B side, so students who are in schools, and this is the team that serves those students across the state. You can see some of the growth. At this time last year, we were doing direct services with 69 students. This year, so far, it's 210, and that number's probably low because I only put that in the PowerPoint last week, so we're probably getting more requests every day. It's an explosion of requests, which is interesting. It's good, we like getting requests, but we are wondering, you know, why, why so many? And I know there was some report about teacher shortages, and it didn't look like there's a lot of vision teacher shortages. I can tell you there are, and we're serving more kids, direct service, which is great. So I don't know how those numbers are counted, the shortage numbers in the state, but we can tell you that we're getting more requests than ever. This is the map, again, I've shown this before, how we kind of divide the state and who serves kids in those regions. They travel a lot, our staff are out and about a lot. We try not to do Zoom, we try to go in-person as much as possible. As Luanne alluded to, we, the Department of Health and Environment, received an enhancement last year to serve children who are blind, low vision, birth to three, and so we partnered with them. And we very quickly, in the spring, hired seven teachers, certified teachers, birth to 21, in vision, and this is the team. And then we have one coordinator, Marita Saltoona, who oversees that work. So this year, again, you can see 105 requests already for children, birth to three. These are in the infant toddler programs, there are 29 networks across the state. This is free for them, free for parents, free for networks, and this is working in conjunction with family service coordinators across the state, so we're very proud of that. We'd like to even do more. We know in that southwest part of the state where students speak a different language or parents speak a different language, there's a need for that, so we'd like to hire somebody who can speak Spanish or other languages as needed. But this is how we divide that program up, a little bit different configuration, but we are committed to serving all corners of the state. If somebody has a request, we will get there, we'll find a way to do that. We're there to educate, inform, and build skills, and this is why I keep saying "inform." Probably the biggest work we do is informing parents right there in their living room. What skills should your children have? What can you work on at home when we're not here, right? What are the things you can do to develop vision and make sure your child's ready for kindergarten? So we're committed to doing that and excited about it. We do a lot of trainings, as I said, locally. We've had, this last year, we had requests from Shawnee Mission and DeSoto to say, "What do you do if you're a teacher and you have a child who's blind or low vision in your classroom? What can you do in lieu of us coming and helping?" So we try to give them some basic tips to say, "Here's some good things you can do in the absence of specific technical assistance." Our Vision Symposium has become very popular, I think we're over 182 at this point. We host this down in Wichita at the Drury Inn. It's kind of budding up against the department's conference, Great Ideas in Education, but we'll be down there for both of those things, and we'll, we're seeing a lot of people from the birth-to-three world coming to this. They want to know the information, they want to know what they can be doing to better serve kids who are blind or low vision. Our STEM programs have received a lot of attention. I had Channel 4, Channel 5, I had the Pitch Weekly, I had KMBC out of my campus the last two weeks to talk about some of these initiatives. And again, it's a campus-based program, but we take it on the road, so our Makerspace has garnered a lot of attention. Our work with Make48 has garnered a lot of attention, and we have done two large competitions on our campus. This is one of the winning teams. And then we'll do a deaf-blind, excuse me, a blind exclusive event with other schools for the blind coming in April to compete on our campus. And the thing that's unique about this is just that we're doing it, the partnerships and the business involvement, some of the largest businesses in Kansas City sending coaches to work alongside kids on a team competition to design a prototype that matches a challenge, and then present that challenge, and they go on to Nationals, and they can win money. Kids love this, and if it's not meaningful or it's not interesting, your skills aren't going to grow. That's kind of the foundation, my foundational belief, you got to do meaningful, interesting things and give them access to that. We did get selected to be part of the Casby District Showcase down in Wichita November 10th. I think we're the only special school that will be there. Our kids will be talking about Make48, what it means to them, what they have done, why they like it, why others should do it, so we'll be excited to do that. We attend a ton of conferences in the community, the Midwest Ability Summit. Mr. Christian is one of our teachers who's blind, is presenting, they like that. It's great to have teachers who are blind explaining how technology works for them, how mobility works, and what access means. Our Blind Sports and Blind Soccer Program, this gets a lot of attention. We did win an award through Victory Project, which is affiliated with Sporting KC, to build an on-campus blind soccer field. It's in the middle of our new track, and so we take this program out too. We work with Baker University and Park University. United States Association of Blind Athletes wants to use this facility for training, because we're the only one in the Midwest that has this, so they have a Paralympic program. And so, when we get everything, the grass to grow and the goals in place in the spring, we will start using it for training exhibitions, and our own students will use it. We partnered with Blind Spot, a great nonprofit organization founded by a parent, a child who's blind, and so they raise money for awareness. We partner with them, and we do these events across the state, really. Our Expanded Core on the Road, these are functional skills that we teach teachers, parents, and school providers. What does it mean to be low vision? Most of our students are not totally blind, they're low vision, but what does that mean for their education, and what can you do to support them? What technologies exist, right? What do cane skills mean for independence and employment? We take these on the road, we've been in Dodge City, we're going to Hutch, Topeka, Manhattan, and Wichita this year. They're great events, if you're in the area, I'd love to have you come join us for those. Our Microsoft Thiel's Computer Science Program, I've talked about it a lot, it's very small, but we won the Founder's Award. Kevin Wang founded this program a number of years ago to teach computer science across the country to schools who don't have computer science teachers. We were the first school of the blind to develop a program specifically for blind, low vision, with Microsoft. They gave us the Founder's Award this year, and so we shared that with our teachers in our school, very proud of that. And then Cosby, the Council of Schools for the Blind, last week gave them an award, the Champion Award, because now they're working with Maryland, and they're working with Washington State and Texas, and this is expanding to other schools for the blind across the country, so very proud of that partnership. I worked in deaf blindness for 14 years before I came to the school for the blind. It means a lot to me because these kids are the most involved, the most complex in the state, and I think it says a lot about our state, how we serve all, when we say "all kids," these are the kids we're talking about. We hired a new director, Katie Kirkoff, to lead that program, and we do lots of fun activities like Music and Me, and we invite parents in remotely or in-person to do activities with their children in the home, so they too can start to see, "What activities can I do to promote learning, to promote literacy and readiness for school?" Our Braille Bean Coffee business, having a blast with it. Every day, we're roasting beans, and we've got kids in life skills doing this. These aren't kids who are necessarily going to college, these are kids who are, again, involved, deaf-blind sometimes, purchasing, roasting, marketing, packaging, selling, inventory, projecting, investing, these are the skills that they're learning in this operation, even if they don't like coffee necessarily. So it's meaningful and interesting. Our Project Search, we work with the YMCA, sending kids into work every day, Monday, actually it's Monday through Thursday, about eight hours a day, so they're learning skills so when they leave, they can be employed. 80% of graduates who leave this program across the country end up employed, and so we're thrilled to be a part of that program. Our nonprofit, the KC Blind All-Star is tremendous, I can't begin to tell you what they've done for us. Yes, our run has been going on about five years in the community, but we also have a Hutchinson contingent who is very, very active, and they did their own event that same day, that same morning, in their home community, bringing people together. This isn't just about blindness, as Luanne said, it's about informing the public about what our kids can do if they're given opportunities and they're given access. And this is our new track, which we paid for in full by private donations, really proud. It was a 300,000-plus total redo, asphalt new, new rubber top, and our kids now are enjoying the fruits of that work. Eagle Alley, this is a new connection between our dormitory and our campus, and this is where we host our Braille Bean operation, but it's a beautiful new addition. Our kids are dry and warm and comfortable, they don't have to go outside to go to lunch anymore, so we're excited about that. We had a donor give us money to upgrade our sensory garden, former outreach director, first outreach director, Dr. Anne Nielsen, who some of you may have known. Her family gave us some money to redo our sensory garden, so we hosted that last Monday on a 90-degree-plus day, but we had the community come out and celebrate that. It was a tremendous gift for us. It'll make our sensory garden accessible for all kids. Getting close to the end, I promise, the grand prize award, we're going to win another award at the end of October. We can't announce it because this is a financial services company who says we'd like to keep it secret, but you've been, one of your staff is a grand prize winner, one of three across the nation for one of the activities and programs that we run, and so we're going to do a little celebration at the end of October. I think October 30th, that date is not correct, but I'll make sure that I get that information to Dr. Watson. I'd love to have you come join us. So, our annual report, we put it together every year, it talks about some of the data, if anybody cares, you know, to see that, we make that widely available, we want people to know what we do. Not everything is perfect, these are the challenges. We need to better inform parents, and I think, I think Anne Ma had asked that question. Yeah, we're not afraid to inform parents, no matter what they decide, because that's up to them, that's up to them. Our job is to give teams and parents accurate information and let them make good decisions. There are teacher shortages, we're in conversations with Wichita State. I've said it before, we want Kansas dollars to stay with Kansas University programs, we'd like to train our own teachers in this state, we don't have one right now. Those are preliminary conversations, ultimately it would come before the board to make decisions about whether we proceed. We are seeing a lot of indirect slash consult services for kids, and that's problematic from our view, because while some kids, that's enough, for many of our kids, those indirect slash consult minutes are simply not enough to be successful in their home placement and their home community. And we're seeing that, we know, because of the shortages of teachers. It's nobody's fault, we're not blaming anybody, but there's, it's going to be hard to succeed and be independent if you're not getting those services. We need better coordinated services, we're trying to take a more active role in that. Teachers would like to work for us, I'd like to hire more, I can't do that right now, but if we could, we really focus on crossing boundaries, breaking down barriers, going where the need is, and making sure that our staff are there. And then we continue to work on the accessibility of state assessments. We need those tests to be accessible for our kids completely in order for those scores to be meaningful for us. If they're not accessible, if they have to work four times as hard, or certain answers are not posed in a way that they can respond to them, then those assessment scores aren't as valid, so that's why we've been relying so much on our interim assessments to really gauge, are we making progress? But I apologize for taking too long, I'm going to stop, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
You were super fast. I am troubled of all of the things, thank you for the great presentation, and you packed a lot in there in a really short amount of time, but that accessibility of state assessments, that's, how many years is this now?
And I want to be careful, because, you know, the department has worked hard to make them more accessible, but I think it's complicated, like everything in our world, it takes time, and to get ahead of that, you have to really invest time early on to have somebody review those items, and there are different parties working on that. I think that test is developed by somebody at KU, the Kite Program, working in conjunction with the Department of Ed. So, we would just like to get access early and have our teachers test that, especially those who are blind. Mr. Christian is a great tester because he uses the technology, but as one example, he uses NVDA as a screen reader. That may be accessible, but if a student uses JAWS, for instance, then that may not be accessible, and we want them to have that access. If they use that device every day, that's what they should use on that test, and that should be available to them. So it's very complicated to match everything up, we understand that, but we would like to do more in terms of helping.
Board members, any questions? I know that some people got kicked off the hand-raising app, so Kathy, was your hand-up?
I just wondered, on your PowerPoint, if we would have access to that?
Of course.
Okay, because I would really like to pull some information out of that to be able to regurgitate to people, so.
We have a lot of, we've gotten better at collecting data across our departments, that's one of the challenges. I constantly ask my staff, "Do we have updated data?" And to aggregate that and tell a story is really what's important about it, because you can get lost in the numbers. So I'm always happy to share data, but this is absolutely available to anybody that would like it.
We'll make sure that it's on the shared drive. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Dennis?
John, thank you so much. Just, can you give a little more information on the Hutchinson? You looked at me when you mentioned that, and I'm lost, I need to...
Yeah, so, our 5K run has been, not a school-for-the-blind operation, it's been our KC Blind All-Stars sponsors that run, it's our major, their major fundraising operation. So when they take the money from that race, or if they get sponsorships or grants, those dollars go directly back to our kids. But our school doesn't have a way to take money, that nonprofit is a way for people to give to us, and if you can't sell, you know, the success of kids who are blind, you can't sell anything. We've had a lot of success raising dollars and going to our community and asking for support. So the Hutchinson component of that, we've had a number of families from Hutchinson who come up to our race every year, and they said, "We'd like to do one in our own community." During COVID, we had basically remote races, people could get a T-shirt, they could sign up, they could run in their home community, take photos and share it with us on social media, and so this year, they said, "We're going to do something in Hutchinson, our own 5K, essentially." So we had some families down there who gathered together, put on the T-shirt, made the run, took photos, and shared that with us. And so these are just families who are organizing an event in their home community to support a greater cause. Does that help?
Yes, if you can keep me informed with an email or something, I'd love to, you know...
Yeah, you'll meet probably one of the parents, I've asked her to come speak to the board about what it means to support kids in their home communities. That's really what we want, we want kids and families to be successful and not have to come to the school if they don't have to. That's why reaching out to them, giving them their own tools, really makes a lot of sense, so we were proud to have a nice group down in Hutchinson. Our event got rained on, we rushed, we had to start early, and we snuck it in, but I think it was a beautiful day in Hutchinson, they had plenty of time, so.
Good, I'm just blessed to hear that. A little concerned about the number three there, indirect consult services. You're saying that there are independents that are maybe filling a vacuum and not doing a complete, not finishing the services that you provide?
So what I'm talking about, yeah, what I'm really referring to there is, when our outreach workers go into schools and get access to students and their programs, a lot of times what we will see on individual education programs is indirect services or consult services for 15 minutes a week. And again, we're not blaming anybody, but when we look at that, we say, "How was that decided? What data did you have to make that determination? And is that enough to help them be successful?" As the teacher shortages grow, the natural inclination is to reduce the level of services of the amount, and again, it's nobody's fault. And again, it's nobody's fault, but unless you have the, the quality supports and services in place, kids really aren't going to make progress. They're not going to matriculate successfully through the system, graduate and be independent. They fall further behind. So we're concerned about that and, and that's why we'd like to do more.
Commissioner.
John, I was thinking and I'm sorry, Luanne's left because this involves her too. I'm just going to kind of think visually. There's a gentleman that in my time on the board sat right where Dennis sits, John Bacon. And most recently, a lady named Janet Wall sat right here. And not too long ago, in your memory, they said to me, you need to fix the schools for the blind and deaf. We were, we're trying to get one. Governor Sebelius had shrunk because of budgets. We ended up with one superintendent. As you know, John, Luanne knows, we couldn't get the two schools to agree on a superintendent and John and Janet were a part of that. You can see, because you, many of you on the board didn't see what we were at then. John was living and he was principal at the School for the Blind. What Luanne and John have done in a relatively short period of time is remarkable, right? For those of you that are on, I just want to say that publicly because if you didn't see it at that time, the level of which they've escalated for those kids. I want to tie this though to something that's currently being talked about. One of the things that, that John and Luanne and I have talked about a lot, I've told them, be the Mayo Clinic for the state of Kansas for school, for kids of the deaf, school for blind. I may not be able to go to Rochester to Mayo Clinic, but I could have satellite services with coordination back to Mayo, right? They have taken that charge on and you can see the growth in the outreach and reaching out to school districts. If the special ed task force would convene, I think there's some lessons learned about how we could serve students with disabilities in a more cost effective manner by centralizing some services and decentralizing other services, but coordinating those services across there. A lot of complexities, right, John, of how to make that happen? But, but that probably isn't going to occur. So again, I just want the board to know because you oversee both these schools and the two people in front of you today are just knocking it out of the park for these kids and they're doing a fantastic job. So thank you.
I would just have two responses. Thank you and thank the board. We couldn't do the work without the board's support, period. It just wouldn't be possible. And I say that wherever I go. So we're grateful for the support of the board. We're grateful for the support of the legislature and, and really it's the people. You are fortunate to have staff in this state who are tremendous. I'm so proud of my staff and the work that they do. I really would prefer them to come here because they deserve the credit for, for the work that we do, but thank you for the, for the kind words.
Please pass along our gratitude to your staff. Thank you for being here, John. Next on our agenda, we have Bill Faflick from KESHA. Welcome back and thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you very much for the opportunity and what great presentations to hear and to follow. And we have a blind runner participating in interscholastic competition out in Ulysses, Kansas. So the far side of the state, we've got kids that are benefiting because of the hard work of our educators and really appreciate that expertise. Well, thank you for the opportunity, Chairman House and Commissioner Watson and members of the board for the opportunity to provide our annual report on behalf of the 700 plus member schools of the Kansas State High School Activities Association. We have had a busy year since we were last with you and we'll run through a number of things, but as we have talked about many times, the most important thing that you do is you formulate a good team. You work with good people and I am so proud of the, the hard work that my staff does each and every day to support 150,000 kids involved in interscholastic activities. And one of our brand new teammates is here to introduce herself to you. Sarah Smith joined us this year and hit the ground running. We were proud to have her initiation take place at the KAY Leadership Camp at Rock Springs where it was about 108 degrees in the shade for a full week. And Sarah was a trooper and did a great job earning a standing ovation from the staff at the end of that conference. So Sarah, I'll turn to you and provide an introduction and then you'll be stuck with me the rest of the way.
All right. Thank you for having me. Yes, it was a, it's been an interesting couple of months. I started July 1 officially with the association. It was a natural transition for me. I was a 19-year educator, so I was 19 years in Kansas schools and classrooms. I taught English Language Arts and Social Studies. I taught multiple or coached multiple volleyball teams and basketball teams. I was a KAY sponsor for many years. I sat and led student improvement teams and building leadership teams. So I did all the things while I was 19 years and I also spent six years as an activities director. And during that time, I realized that that was something that I loved. So the transition to the association has just been great. My picture is no longer up there with the list of stuff that I oversee, so let me know if I leave something out. So under my umbrella, I oversee gymnastics, tennis, there it is again, KAY, bowling, unified bowling and the Hall of Fame. So we are starting a tennis state competition for our girls this Friday and Saturday. The following weekend, weekend, we will have state gymnastics followed by state volleyball. So it has been an intense fall to say the least. So I'm thrilled to be here. On unified bowling, this is our third year for postseason competition and that will take place in Topeka on November 14th in the afternoon. So if you are in the area, I would encourage you to attend that. That's at Topeka West Ridge Lanes. And unified bowling is a relatively new program. I wanted to read to you the mission of unified bowling. It's a very unique program and new to our state. Let me find that again. So this is our mission and purpose. It's dedicated to promoting social inclusion through shared sports training and competition experiences. Unified sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. It was inspired by a simple principle. Training together and playing together is a quick path to friendship and understanding. Having sports in common is just one way that preconceptions and false ideas are swept away. So our unified bowling teams consist of trio teams with two athletes and one partner. So I'm very excited to be a part of that program. Another program that I oversee that I'm very passionate about is KAY. I'm passionate about all these programs that I oversee, but KAY is a leadership program through service. And what makes KAY very unique is anyone can be a part of KAY. There is a place for everyone within that organization. So very proud to oversee those programs and I'm looking forward to everything that that brings. Thank you for having me.
Sarah's a great addition to our team. Scott Goodhart is our Director of Officials, a brand new position for the Kansas State High School Activities Association. We'll talk a little bit about Scott as we move forward and his work because that is very important for us to continue to impact, to provide officials and officials training for our member schools. This is a year where we tried to maintain a focus on our priorities, certainly maintaining the difference between school sports and club sports or recreational sports, or even that gap with, with collegiate activities where it seems to be more about the dollars than it is about the education. And we're very pleased to maintain an accountability system within our rules and within our protocols that keep kids connected to school each and every day. It makes them better now while they're in school, but it also prepares them for a lifetime of success as they learn those life skills as embodied in KESHA so that they are able to be successful in their next opportunities after participation. To do all of that, we need to make sure that those environments are safe, that those opportunities are appropriate and kids are benefiting because they want to be part of these. They get to represent their school. Ownership is a big part of what we do. You know, we think of the Navy SEALs and they go through their training, the most elite of our armed services and, you know, they go through that training and their motto is often full benefit, full benefit, full benefit. They want to maximize, no matter how difficult the challenge is at the time, the benefit on the outside, on the inside. We want that very same. Kids learn when they're stretched and we really appreciate the work that our coaches do, that our administrators do in supporting those students as they participate in all of our activities, whether they're athletic, whether they are leadership, or whether they are education models or, or scholarship competitions. We are very, very pleased to be part of that. Our priorities are there. I will move quickly through those, but I always start with a quiz. And here's a quiz for you. Who can identify this gentleman? Not a Kansan, but a famous athlete, son of a famous athlete. That's Bronny James. Okay. Probably one that's a little bit easier. Quiz number, question number two. How about this gentleman? We all watched him on Monday Night Football, Damar Hamlin. Well, some of us watched him a year ago where Bronny and Damar had a very similar experience. How about this young lady? This is Claire. Claire's a high school athlete. Thankfully not in Kansas, but thankfully Bronny, Damar and Claire all had similar experiences and all had similar outcomes. They all had cardiac issues while involved in competition. Damar on the biggest stage of all, an NFL field. Bronny at a college basketball practice and Claire at a high school JV volleyball match. All went down with cardiac arrest. All of them had a team immediately respond and that is what we're training with our kids, our, our school, our school leaders, our school programs. Our priority, as always, our number one priority is risk minimization and we do that. Thing that was impressive, most impressive about Claire and the challenge I shared with administrators across the state this year, all 600 plus that attended our initial meetings is to respond in the same time that they did with the video they watched in this training because they had an AED laying by Claire's side within 29 seconds. It was not in the gym, but 29 seconds later, that AED was there, it was opened up and they were ready to begin saving this young lady's life. She's alive today. Bronny's alive today. Damar's alive today because people had planned, people were prepared. Our schools are doing that very same thing in Kansas and we have a couple of saves in Kansas because of that preparation and we're very pleased for that. So emergency action plan has been a focus for us this year and it's a national focus as well. Because we have the equipment, we have the training, we need to be able to implement that plan when that time comes. We actually put into our protocol a rehearsal day for every one of our activities through this school year. So on a designated day, early in the season, our teams take 15, 20 minutes out of that coveted practice time to go through an emergency action plan involving those people, athletic trainers, school nurses, community first responders to support them in their needs. This is very important. We know that muscle memory is so significant and when it comes to that crisis situation, we want to make sure that our folks are prepared. We did that through trainings. We doubled the number of trainings this past year, almost doubled. We went up to 14. We've been at eight. So a little bit, you know, hitting the state and hitting that, hitting that hard to make sure that everybody had access to some significant changes, but also some standards that are out there. We think about student health and student wellness. I often will talk about the mental health of our students, the mental wellness of those students. We know the activity program is one that helps foster mental wellness because kids are connected to their peers. Kids are connected to coaches who are observant and vigilant and don't have to be problem solvers, they have to be connectors and they need to know what resources are available. And our staff have done a good job of preparing those resources. One of the hashtags that you'll see a lot from our national, our partner at the National Federation is, is that hashtag, we see you, that no one should be invisible, that every kid is valued, every student is valued and we want to provide a connection point for them. Activities provide that. Play, perform, competing together is what our students do when they're involved in our activity program. But our mental health videos that we rolled out one year ago have been well received across the country, across our state and across the country. And they help students because they involve students, written by one of our Sports Medicine Advisory Committee members, a specialist in this area, a member of the Kansas State University faculty, has done a great job in providing this resource for our member school so that kids that are anxious about their performances, anxious about school, anxious about life, have that opportunity to know where those resources might be available, to find someone that would help them. They're short videos because we know that that's important, that we keep that timely. We had a tough fall in terms of the environmental conditions. One of the hottest falls that we've experienced the start of the school year always coincides with that high heat. And one of the tools that we provided to every high school a year ago, and we're now working our way through the middle schools, are wet bulb globe thermometers. This device measures the atmospheric conditions so that we know the impact of solar radiation, not just the ambient air temperature, not just the relative humidity, but other factors of shade, of wind, of, of, of the humidity at the location where practice is occurring. And those guidelines help schools adjust practices or cancel practices as we started this school year. And it was difficult at times for our coaches to understand, but I think they have bought in and they understand that taking care of kids is priority number one. We need this message to spread beyond our schools because there are maybe some other groups that would, would benefit from this type of protocol as well. We had a busy year in terms of a number of protocol changes and rule changes, things that we enacted and things that were enacted for us that we'll share as we move into the next phase of the presentation today. One thing that was a really important change for us was a change in our physical exam. We changed it, our, our protocol for pre-participation physical exam, changed it in two ways. The first way was simply a sign off component. Where that mid-level provider now that is an out of state, as long as they are approved by their state licensing organization may now sign our physicals. That's very good for our schools and our families who are on that border or any one of our four borders and, and may have a doctor or healthcare provider from out of state. The other thing we did is we changed a protocol of receiving those physical exams because they contain a lot of information that is private information and we want to make sure that it is protected. So those are in a secure process across our membership. They are not just given to a coach, they are given to the nurse, to the athletic trainer, to the administrator in charge of that activity. They're reviewed and then that information is shared as appropriate. It is very important that our kids have all of that done prior to even beginning to practice. We did change one of our season of activity rules that provides for an opportunity for a kid to try out for a team, hopefully make the team, but if they do not, not to then go pick another school and go out for that same activity. You know, that school shopping was clearly about activity participation and it seemed like that was displacing kids that belonged and had earned the time or the position at another school. So that rule change was one, really comes in, is very beneficial with one of the pieces of legislation we'll talk about in just a minute. We changed our seasons of activities, our, our change of season of activities rule that allow for jamborees or organized practices between school communities, three or four school communities coming together in our team activities only. So in the fall, soccer and football and volleyball. In the winter, basketball. And then in the spring, baseball and softball and soccer again. They can come together for one period for a precise amount of time, a measured amount of time and have that experience of their kids competing against other kids. Very beneficial to our small schools who don't even have a scrimmage partner, very beneficial to our big schools who don't have to play against their teammates for every practice. It's that, that, that opportunity helps them get better, helps the coaches get better and be more prepared for their first competitions. We changed a baseball rule. One of the pieces of research we've studied for a long period of time is about arm care for our pitchers. You know, the phrase pitchers and catchers report always came early. It was a great day for me because baseball season was just about to begin. We are now allowing our baseball coaches to work with their kids twice a week, four weeks prior to the beginning, just for the process of helping them develop their arms so that when the rigors of pitching in competition begin, their arms are able to respond appropriately. We believe that this will be very beneficial. Along that same line, our baseball coaches are very pleased to have a few more opportunities to play games. They're up to 26 games along with our softball programs as well at the varsity level. They're up to 26 games at each, in each of those activities. We did modify our beginning protocol for cross-country and football and soccer. They had requirements for minimum number of practices. When we start in August, it's hot, but when you start late, like some of our school programs do and some students do because they come to school late or they come out for an activity late, they did not need to go through as many of those practices. So we, under the direction of Sports Medicine Advisory, made this reduction for those particular activities. Those are the only fall activities that have a required number of practices prior to their first competition. So that was a, a good move for our schools and well received. This will be a year where we have a new format for our state wrestling. We've gone from, we're going from three sites and four days of tournaments down to two sites and three days of competition. We'll have our girls between two boys tournaments at in Salina and in Wichita and we think this is going to be a fabulous environment for our kids, especially. Uh, environment for our kids, especially on championship, uh, Saturday when, uh, those schools are together. So they'll be there for three days, a little bit of wrestling each day for all the programs instead of a massive amount in just a two-day period. So we're looking forward to that environment, we're taking that same philosophy, uh, and it will be a year, but we're going from nine football championship games competing at eight different venues. To three sites and we'll play a Friday night game and a doubleheader on Saturday to each of three starts. Each of three sites starting next year with the next football scheduling cycle that comes out. Doing the same with soccer, gonna play our quarterfinals as we've always done at the higher seeded site, but also the semifinals. And then we'll have three back-to-back championship games in our class one through four A, team championship, our class five A championship and our class six A championship. They'll all be back-to-back-to-back at one venue, so, uh, soccer fans, you're gonna be in the right spot, you'll get to see three championship games. Constellation games, the third place games would take place on an adjacent field, so, uh, we're looking forward to that, uh, being in place. Basketball is the next one, uh, but people are pretty passionate about the, their love for our basketball format. So we're looking at that, evaluating that, taking that out to our regional administrators for additional input before our board, uh, makes a decision on that. I will pause to say thank you to Mr. McNeese who served faithfully on our Board of Directors for a while, now Mr. Porter and, uh, Dr. Horst are on our board and we thank them for their service. And Dr. Horst has double duty because she's also on our executive board and we really appreciate, uh, their commitment to, uh, school activities. Uh, and the learning and, and growth that occurs for our kids. Uh, one of the things that our staff have focused on for a number of years and been responsive to is how can, uh, coaches work with kids in the summer? And we've heard repeatedly that, uh, kids are worn out in the summer, uh, because they're so busy going from volleyball practice to basketball practice to softball competitions. And, uh, at the direction of our, our leadership board, uh, we convened a group, a coaching, uh, coaching summer rules group and they have met three or four times now. Uh, and a couple by Zoom and they have come up with a couple of drafts of maybe some modifications that our membership could, should consider. To allow kids to experience summer, not to be worn out at the end of the summer. Uh, and then, uh, to be fresh as the school year starts. It will also benefit our coaches, uh, who work all summer long, who feel like they have to work extra hard because it's okay to take the summer off until you get beat by someone down the road who isn't taking the summer off. And then, uh, you know what those expectations are from your school community. So the two different models are, are really unique, uh, would be different for us. Uh, the first model, uh, condition, uh, considers a window of opportunity for specific programs to operate. Basketball, uh, for boys and girls would be the month of June, uh, primarily. And, uh, during that time, football, uh, and volleyball would be hands-off. They can do some conditioning, but they wouldn't be in the gym with their kids, they wouldn't be going to tournaments with their kids, et cetera. And then we flipped that for the month of July, in the month of July, football and volleyball would have the opportunity to be, be with their teams. Who start their seasons just a few weeks after that time period is over, while basketball coaches would take their break and basketball programs and, uh, players would have that break. So spreading that out in, uh, that first option is, is certainly something our, our membership is considering. The other is just simply to establish a maximum number of days that any coach can have with their kids over the course of the summer. The number that seems to be out there that some of the other states in the Midwest use is twenty. So as a school coach, I can work with my school kids twenty days over the course of the summer. If I'm a football coach, I can use those in seven-on-seven, I can use those for a team camp, I can use those for, uh, a traditional practice. But I get twenty and when they're done, they're done. Uh, may work with receivers, I may work with backs, I may work on the defensive side of the ball, uh, likewise with, uh, with our basketball and our volleyball folks. So having a number of days as a maximum is another thing, uh, that our, our membership is considering. Of course, they could say, we like what we're doing now and maintain the status quo and, uh, we'll see. Uh, but, uh, the discussion has been good, uh, the, uh, the product I think is going to be something that we can implement, uh, fairly quickly. Uh, and, and would benefit our kids and would benefit our school programs as well. Couple of updates for you to be aware of, I visited with Dr. Watson, uh, a while back and we have suspended our loss of instructional time survey for at least one cycle. Uh, where we are measuring the amount of time kids are out of school. Uh, it's not that we don't believe that's important, it is one of the most time-consuming tasks that our schools do. Uh, and we always wonder whether that data is as accurate as it needs to be. Uh, we also wonder how that's being used, I use it when I come and talk to you, uh, but, uh, that's, um, I might be the only one in the state of Kansas using that. Uh, we are starting our first ever Military Appreciation Night, so the week of Veterans Day, uh, we have a playoff game on Friday night. Veterans Day is November eleventh, so all military veterans and their guests would be admitted free to our contest on that Friday night. Uh, our five A and six A schools are, uh, changing the way they are doing their brackets and all of their team games and won't have play-in games for our seventeen and eighteen seeds. Thirty-six is a really awkward number, uh, for, uh, teams to be in a bracket, sixteen and multiples of sixteen are really good. Uh, thirty-six is not there. So we have two teams on the east and two teams on the west that, uh, would play, or, or four teams on the each, each side that would play a game, a playing game. And, uh, right now, we're, uh, we're not going to be doing those and see how, how that plays out. We continue to, uh, go digital with our protocols to help with, uh, appropriate communication, printing less, mailing less. Uh, being more efficient is certainly there and that begins with tickets and we're doing away with paper tickets that we have mailed out and have asked schools to mail back for our events for years and years and years. If you're a basketball fan and you go to a basketball high school game this year, there is a significant rule change for you. There are no more one-and-ones. Uh, we will now have two shots on every foul, uh, starting with foul number five. This is the exact model college women have used for the last number of years. We believe that, and this is not a Kansas rule change, this is a National Federation rule change, so, uh, will be a little bit of a change, uh, but I think it will be well received. Takes, uh, hopefully, uh, makes the games more efficient, changes the strategy in terms of fouling late in the game, uh, potentially i- is there as well. So, uh, after each quarter, those fouls reset, except if you go to overtime, which is just simply an extension of that fourth quarter. So those are the things we have done, some things have happened, uh, that we have had to respond to. And that includes some legislation that, uh, I'll review very quickly with you. And, uh, a large portion of time was devoted to, uh, educating our membership relative to this because, uh, quite honestly, we knew. Uh, of the interest of having homeschool students, uh, with eligibility at our public schools, but we didn't know that it would be as broad. Uh, as this particular legislation ended up being, uh, it was added on to the, uh, finance bill for, for schools and, and, and ultimately passed. Uh, so, hey, how this bill, House Substitute for Senate Bill, uh, uh, one thirteen. Does allow for non-public school students to be eligible at public schools in Kansas based upon where they reside. Uh, and that is the requirement that is there. That certainly does a lot to the six individual eligibility rules that we have, I'll walk through those here in, in just a moment. It creates a, a seasonal eligibility at the high school. Uh, it does allow us to maintain some of the standards that we would want, uh, but not all of the standards. The impact is really, really significant. You know, the breadth of this impact is, is really, really broad, uh, because it truly impacts every, potentially every public school in Kansas and every student in Kansas. Uh, because it may provide an opportunity for some, but it may displace others. It may take a spot away from a kid that's in a school, been in that school, uh, in school every day and someone that's not been connected other than where they live now has that opportunity. As this association, we have opposed this, uh, but, uh, legislators felt like it was time for the non-public school students to participate. Uh, and this is the protocol that we have adopted. So, uh, when we talk about non-public schools, uh, we're talking about those private schools, some of which are already members of the association, some of which are not because they're, they're non-accredited. Uh, we're also talking about homeschool students. Uh, likewise, we need to talk about, when we're talking about a local public school, we're talking about the school that's defined by a home address. A one-to-one relationship exists for high schools, for every student or every address in Kansas, and that is the one and only place these students would be eligible under this legislation. They're always eligible where they're enrolled and attending full-time, this also provides eligibility, uh, in this particular case. And it is a seven-twelve because we're a seven-twelve organization. Uh, the things that we get to maintain, a lot of the safety components are, are certainly, uh, important for us, the pre-participation physical exam, we've mentioned. All of the education relative to concussions and heat acclimatization and all of those things certainly are very, very, very important. And are true for any member of any school team, uh, that we have, so, uh, that's all in place. Uh, and, and we believe that, you know, local schools can have some requirements, uh, that are above and beyond. Maybe it's drug testing, maybe it's, uh, uh, other requirements for service in the, in the school. Uh, those things are, are applicable for students that are homeschooled or non-public school students as well. Because this was brand-new, we needed a way to, uh, figure out, we always determine eligibility by listening to and learning the student's story. And athletic directors knew that because they have a thing called transcript and they evaluated the transcript and they knew what classes the student was in, uh, the previous semester and what they'll be in the next year. We don't have this for our non-public school students, so we had to come up with a mechanism to do that. Our staff put together a, a really efficient, uh, way for this, uh, a very thorough way for us to evaluate each of the six criteria we need to determine whether eligibility exists. And we ask a number of questions, that's just the tip of the iceberg, but, uh, this is a project, uh, an application process that is initiated by families. Uh, when they choose to have their student participate in this way. The six criteria that you see that we look at for every kid are listed here and we look at the very first one, scholarship. You know, we have always said that scholarship is the number one, we want to support academic achievement, academic, uh, accountability is important. Kids are better academically when they're involved in school activities because someone is holding them accountable, uh, for their performance in the classroom. Uh, that doesn't change for students in our schools. But it's different when you apply it to kids that are not in your school. So we look at the private school students and it's pretty much the same, we can look at a transcript. The only difference is obviously, you know, those kids are maybe not in an accredited program and what they give credit for may be different than what, uh, some of the public schools are giving credit for. Courses that you might not have, uh, on, in, in the database. Uh, but homeschool students, uh, don't have, they have an even broader spectrum from classes to choose from. And according to legislation, uh, we are only allowed to have, uh, only require that the parents to testify or to attest to the fact. That their son or daughter is making satisfactory progress towards a successful completion of their courses and/or towards graduation. That would satisfy the academic accountability requirement the association maintains. Uh, as determined by our legislators, that was modified. You know, we talk about a bona fide student all the time and that's a, a student whose behavior is also appropriate. We don't want to have certain, uh, elements representing the school, if the behavior is inappropriate, we want a way to correct that. We know kids love to play games and to do that, it's an incentive to behave appropriately in the school classroom, in the hallways, in the community. Uh, so a bona fide student rule is very important. In a similar way, our building principals make that determination, often through a code of conduct. But for students that we don't know and don't know their stories, we have to ask the parents, do you attest to the fact that your students are not, uh, contrary to the expectations? That we have detailed, uh, in our Rule Fourteen, uh, and, or convicted of any criminal behavior? And when we find those, we'll respond as we always do. What is a corrective action, what's an educational component that we can put in place so that redemption is possible? Uh, or maybe a suspension is, is warranted. Uh, that's our bona fide student rule and how the, uh, legislation impacts that. Legislation also impacts enrollment and attendance, uh, well, that's how we've always determined a number of things. You know, you're eligible where you're enrolled and attending school. Uh, homeschool kids are not enrolled and attending our schools. Uh, so, uh, private school kids have to be in five, just like our regular school, our public school students are in five. Uh, but a homeschool student just simply has to be, uh, in a course of study that's allowing them to make progress towards graduation. As the parents testify or provide, uh, a testament to us in, in that regard. Uh, so their requirement is very different in that regard. Uh, the fifth criteria, there's absolutely no difference, age requirements are the same. You're eighteen, you're two, if you're eighteen or nineteen, honor before, uh, August one, you're too old for our activity program. Uh, if you're fifteen or fourteen, in eighth grade or seventh grade, honor before, uh, August one, you're too old for our activity program. Uh, we have an age hardship process that we utilize, uh, very rarely, uh, but i- it is in place and, uh, we have this process, no change there for that criteria. And the final criteria is probably one of the most challenging ones for us, uh, it's transfers. Because we already know that this is, oh, a process that's, that's been a challenge for our member schools, one we've really focused on the last several years with extended education for our membership. Uh, and we've always triggered a transfer of the first day of attendance in the new school. Well, homeschool kids aren't attending our school, so when does the transfer period begin? Uh, so it's a, it's a real, been a real challenge, we know the transfer rule still applies for our homeschool students or our private school students when they change addresses or when they want to change schools. Uh, so we know that, uh, we've got a, a, a framework for which we're operating, uh, with our transfer rule. Uh, but it is, the, the hardest part was just figuring out, when does that window of time begin for a student when they're not actually coming to the school as a student? So, uh, again, uh, a challenge. So here's the, here's the last part of my, my, oh, by the way, once you become eligible, you have to maintain eligibility. So any student on our team are still held to all of the, the rules that we have, whether it's outside competition, whether it's our amateur rule, whether it's our NIL guidance. All of those, uh, things are in place for all students, public, non-public school, uh, students as we move forward. So here's the, the final quiz question I have for you, I'm not done with my presentation, but the final quiz question here is, can a student be eligible to schools at the same time? Historically, the answer has been no, but now, under this legislation, the actual answer is actually yes. Uh, I can be a football player at the private school I attend and then decide, I'd like to play basketball at the public school where I live. Not ever attend the public school, continue on at the private school. Uh, so it's a real challenge, uh, it's not a situation that's, um, uh, unmanageable, we're managing it. Uh, but we're shaking our heads a lot thinking, you know, what are the unintended consequences? And we're living that right now, I think it will probably be a little bit more significant in the, uh, winter season than it has been in the fall. Uh, we processed two-hundred-and-five applications that were approved. Uh, a number of those, we probably had another thirty that were submitted that were denied, uh, through our process. Those were denied because they didn't live in the attendance center where they were applying or they were already in a program that was a public school virtual program. We have other avenues for those students to be eligible, not through this legislation and those are longstanding, uh, systems that have been in place. So, uh, it, that's, that's where it is, but this is, this is a significant challenge that bounced back and forth between those two schools. So it is, that is what we're, we're working through and, uh, we know that, uh, we'll, 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 we'll continue to do so. So, um, we're gonna march on through, um, the, the other piece of legislation that was very significant for us was the transgender bill. You know, when I think of the, the legislation that occurred. No two pieces of legislation have been more significant in terms of breadth. The non-public school eligibility, nor in terms of depth, the transgender. And the depth I'm talking about is on that personal level for those students. We want every kid to have an opportunity to participate. We want competitions to be fair, but we want every kid to benefit from that activity participation. The Fairness of Women's Sports Act says that a student born a female, uh, are the only ones that are able to participate in our activities designed for females. So a male-born student that transitions to a female is not eligible to participate in that way. They would be eligible to participate on the boys' team or on a mixed-gender team. Uh, so you, this, this act really impacts not a lot of kids, but those it does, it's very, very significant. So we have doubled our support to try and, and be available and, and access resources for those students, uh, and make sure that, yeah. We see you, students, we want to support you, students, because you matter to us, uh, you matter to, to your school communities and you matter to Kansas. So, uh, uh, we'll, we'll continue to walk through that, uh, again, uh, we are using our pre-participation physical exam. Uh, and gender at birth, uh, as provided by the physician that does, does that evaluation. So, uh, we're, we're walking through that and again, the, the, uh, legislation, uh, had us amend our current transgender policy. For those students that are transitioning from male to female, but our policy of female to male remains as is. Uh, so we're good with that and that's, that's not been a problem at all, we have a number of those kids, not a lot, a few kids are participating there. While we had legislative activity, we also had some inactivity. Uh, we did take to the board, uh, to, to you and you experienced this a year ago. Our, um, request to have a multiplier put into our, uh, into state statute that would allow private schools to be multiplied up to potentially increase their classification. Current Statute seventy-two, seventy-one, fourteen says that's this association, the KSHSA, shall classify schools according to student attendance. I can do nothing else but that, we asked them to add other factors. First two weeks, we had a hearing and after that, uh, nothing. First two weeks, we had a hearing and after that, nothing, no movement on this. So we'll go back again because our membership has asked us to go back and move forward. A couple of other bills that we supported, no actions after the initial hearing. There was a broadcast exclusivity bill that was passed and that will impact the association when our current contract with the NFHS Network expires. So that's the, the classification change of the multiplier. I've shared some stuff that's been a challenge for us, but we always love to celebrate kids and school programs. One of the awards that's unique to Kansas is the Performing Arts School of Excellence Award. It's given to one school every year that demonstrates excellence across the performing arts. That's debate and speech, that's vocal music, that's instrumental music. That's on, on the stage with our, with our thespians. So our winner this year is DeSoto High School. Last year was McPherson. I know Randy was very proud to have his former school district honored in that way, but it's, it's unique in the fact that, you know, we have a team award called a state championship at the end of all of our activities, a culminating award. But this one impacts multiple activities that the association covers and it truly is a community award. Yes, high school, but it starts in the middle school and the elementary school and we're very proud of these schools. We did have six other finalist schools and 11 schools that were commended this year through our process. So one of the things that we're, we know is important is telling our story. We continue to use KESHA covered as a resource for that. What great features we have on the outstanding kids that are written by Brett Scott, Ricky and Mac and, and some contributors as well that tell that story. But they're also, through our partnership with Capital Federal and have a True Blue Student of the Week, but we also have True Blue scholarships. Thirty-four kids again this year received a $2,000 scholarship in each, in, one each in the respective activities. We administer 34 activities. Every category had a $2,000 scholarship winner. And they were not all large schools, they were not all small schools, they were not all urban schools. They were as far north, south, east and west as you can be. And what a great group of kids that benefit because of their participation at that next level. And we are very appreciative of Capital Federal and their partnership in providing those resources for our staff members, but also for our scholarships that are there. So we have our boys' activity winners, our girls' activity winners, and then our, what I would say, our mixed team activities that are open to boys and girls. And what, what outstanding kids that we have literally from across the state of Kansas. We had our largest school and one of our smaller schools involved, north, south, east and west as I had mentioned. So we get a lot of feedback on that. You that are in the marketing world know that some of this data might be interesting to you. But you know, what I'm told is the most impressive one is the bounce rate of 3.2% because people aren't coming to KESHA covered and leaving right away. They're sticking around a while and reading about Kansas kids that are being successful in their activities. And when I say success, that doesn't mean winning. That means achieving success by serving others and, and helping their community. So we're very pleased with that. We're about to go back out on the road. We did a fall tour, a late summer tour. We go back on the fall. We do eight different meetings across the state. We're going to talk about potential change to those summer rules that I mentioned earlier. We're also going to talk about our state tournament format. Whether or not in basketball, we need to change the format and either separate boys and girls by week so that we can have multiple teams and, and classes in one site or maybe not take as many teams to the state tournament site. Go from quarterfinals being played at now at the state site to being played at the, the higher seeded site. We're gonna talk about shot clock because our membership has asked us to do that and we'll see whether or not that is adopted. It's a brand new rule from the National Federation. Two years ago, they put it in. At that time, coaches were in favor of it, administrators not so much. We're hearing from more administrators that maybe that's something that we want to do. We're gonna find out whether that's a vocal minority or if that's the majority of what our, our schools want. We'll also talk about the process that we get to that championship in our 321A classes for both volleyball and basketball. You know, we have been very firm in the fact that regionals are regionals. And you start at home and you stay close to home and you advance from there because that reduces travel cost. It also keeps kids in school longer. Travel is not as big a deal to some as it used to be. And again, we're gonna discern whether or not that's a, a significant issue or not. Couple of other things that are there as well and we'll, we'll get the pulse of the association as, as we move through. But we have great kids that are trying to do good things. Sportsmanship and behavior. I don't talk about sportsmanship as much as I talk about behavior. It's unfortunate that we've had 111 red card ejections in just soccer this year. That's a lot. And the thing that's most concerning to me about that is that number is maybe a little bit above where we typically are at this time of the year. But it's the multiple offenses that some students are receiving. And our, our self-adopted procedure of sit out the next game and all of the activities when that offense is against an official, maybe doesn't have the pull that it did when it first started. So we'll see because officials are important. We need, if we'd have been here yesterday, we'd all been in our uniforms, our official shirt and we would have introduced you to Scott Goodheart. And Scott is our new Director of Officials. He's actually on assignment today, working to recruit, to train and retain officials. Because we need those adjudicators in our athletic activities, but also in our performing arts. So what, what a great focus it is and Scott's the perfect guy to do that. He's got that energy, he's got that experience because he's a 20-year state level official in three different activities. Volleyball, basketball and softball. So he'll be, he's a great addition to our team already. I want to say thank you again for what you do and the support you've provided for Kansas schools. And I tell you that as a former teacher, coach, building, district level administrator, now state administrator, but mostly from that position of dad. Because as a track coach, my four kids, my relay team are better because of the work that you have done and your predecessors have done. So thank you very much for that and thank you for the support you continue to provide to us at the association now. And with that, I have probably extended my time and I've extended yours and I apologize, but I'm open for questions, Chairman.
We do only get to see you in this capacity once a year, right? As, as far as providing the annual updates. So thank you so much, Bill. Board members, any questions or comments? Dina?
I really don't have a question, but I do want to just say thank you for all you do and all your, the staff. They're very professional and they make professional type decisions. And as you can see, it's very, it's a very broad activity association that covers a lot of things. And our students are better off because we have KESHA. So I commend you and your staff for all of the work I see that you do on a regular basis. And it's not even close to the amount of time I put in. I know they put in hours for kids. So thank you.
It's my pleasure. We all care about kids, just like you. Care about kids becomes that, that, that passion for you, drives you.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again for your presentation. I've had to talk to you after, I know it was after hours, a couple of years ago on a cross-country question and you answered it in the best way possible, make it simple so that we could go back and tell the other parents and they understood it and it, and it made it so, so nice to, for you to be able to be accessible so that I could get it, get my question answered directly from KESHA. And then I think I, you responded to me in some emails very professionally and answered all my questions when we were going through that whole vote thing on the, on the multiplier rule. So I, and thank you for the pass, by the way, at our, really appreciate that. That will come in handy probably either this fall yet or in the spring. So I appreciate that and thank you for your presentation.
And I want to say thank you again. I, I loved your comment about creating that opportunity to participate for each and every student. That's so important and when we're focused on just the winning, it's, it's easy to overlook all of the educational benefits that come from this experience. So thank you for what you're doing. I want to say thanks to both Jim Porter and Dina Horst for serving. I know that there can be some, some lengthy board meetings and this is obviously a lot of information to take in. I'd be in trouble if you handed me, I guess you did recently, hand me the handbook and just processing all of that is a lot. So, so thank you both and thank you for the presentation today. All right, board members, we have just one item left, which is numbered nine on today's meeting agenda, the chair report. My remarks will be brief. I know that, I'm sure everybody's itching to get out. And we've hit on several of the things that I was going to update the board on, including K-BOR. We have help coming, oh, she's not even in the room. We have help coming soon from Michaela. And so looking forward to having an update for you all in November. Interviews are happening, so that is good news. And hopefully we will have a new board secretary to give Michaela some relief. And then it is annual review time. I'm gonna let the commissioner speak about that here in a minute. And I just wanted to share, I got some really interesting feedback this morning that was kind of unexpected. As I arrived in the building, I won't tell you who it came from, but I ran into someone who's on staff and they just happened to make the passing comment that they were so impressed by our ability as a board to cooperatively work together as a team, despite the fact that we come from different backgrounds and with different agendas. They said that we can still focus on making a difference for Kansas education. And I just wanted to share that with you because that was a neat thing to, to hear unexpectedly, you know, as I arrived in the building this morning. So finally, the legislature has convened for, for four days, they've wrapped up now, the Education Committee. And I understand that Chair Williams said yesterday that she does not plan to call the Special Education Task Force, which was something that I made a, a comment here about yesterday. And so I would just like to reiterate for all of you, I, I think this is a mistake. I expected this task force to be called. It, it's part of the law. And as we've learned from our presenters today, from KSD and KSSB, there's just an awful lot to process when we think about special education, the services that are provided, the funding that is necessary. And so despite her already saying she doesn't plan to call it, I'm asking Chair Williams again to please convene the Special Education Task Force and, and set a date so that we can meet and give the time that is necessary to special education. I'm concerned that this may not really be about special education and that instead she's simply interested in changing the way that the formula is calculated so that that money can go somewhere else. So I'll leave it at that for now. Randy, did you want to talk real quick about reviews?
Sure. Wendy Fritz is our Director of Human Resources. If you haven't met Wendy, I think most of you have. She will email to you evaluation or reviews of myself and Mark. Typically, you also get one for administrative assistant. We didn't do that because Michaela's just temporarily filling in. And so that's why you won't get that third one generally. I do have, this, these are packets for each of you where I give you a summary of my work over the past year. And it also has your board goals and, and the progress thereof in those goals. So if you have any questions after you look at this, I'll pass these out to you on your way. And then again, you'll get it electronically from Wendy. I think probably today you'll get it. Melanie will, will set up a time to have it back to her and everything, so.
Thank you. Our next item B is to act on board travel. Are there any changes to travel? Michelle?
I think Michaela got it yesterday, but just so the board knows, I'm gonna be at the Spring Hill State of the District tomorrow morning, it's breakfast. But just, just to be sure she has that.
All right, got it. She just walked in.
I think you have that. I just want to make sure the board knows.
Any other additions, changes to board travel? If not, a motion is in order to approve board travel. Betty and Jim. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Nine and missing Ann, motion passes. Committee reports, are there any committee reports? And you had one in your packet from Dina, that's an individual report. Michelle?
Meeting early with KSD, we have a Zoom call for a, a meeting early in November. So I might have an update at that first board meeting in November as well.
Thanks for the update. Next item is the Board Attorney Report. Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to be brief, cover three topics. The first is that in last month's meeting, a board member asked about whether or not we follow Robert's Rules of Order. And so I just wanted to briefly address that. The, the answer is that, that the board does not strictly follow Robert's rules. We do defer and loosely follow Robert's rules. I should, probably should say more than loosely, but since it's not mandated, you know, that's my guide and my reference. I typically have the short and the long version of Robert's rules at my, at my quick reference in case something comes up and because there's always a, a new wrinkle to procedure that maybe haven't addressed before. We do try to follow the board policy and guidelines in terms of various, or we do follow that and that's where we typically refer to a procedure. There's nothing in the Open Meetings Act that requires following Robert's Rules of Order. It's typically, you know, the board or the body, the governmental agency that either chooses to follow Robert's or other procedure, parliamentary procedure. For example, the Kansas Senate follows Robert's Rules of Order and the Kansas House follows Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure. I'm not particularly familiar with that. Manual of Legislative Procedure, but I just verified that that's, that they actually follow two different guides with regard to parliamentary procedure or rules of order. So second topic has to do with just a, a short follow-up on some of the discussion that occurred yesterday with regard to consequences or repercussions of not being accredited. Certainly glad that the state has not had to take that position. I don't, I would defer to everything stated by the commissioner. The only additional sub-points that I would add, because I was thinking about what are some consequences other than the, possibly the obvious of, you know, college or university not recognizing a diploma or credits from an unaccredited institution. But one thing that I think about with, that, that we don't see in education as much, but we do see in other accredited institution or municipalities, has to do with bond ratings that, so the financial consequence of accreditation because, you know, the, the various bond ratings have to do, the borrowing of money and the selling of bonds and the interest rates that are associated with that are very closely tied with the, you know, with the bond rating. So if a municipality has, you know, goes up and down from a triple A to a, a double A or a B rating, that has a financial impact. And so certainly accreditation ultimately could have a negative, or the lack of accreditation could have a negative impact on bond ratings. And, and obviously the most significant has to do with loss of funding, state or federal. And that's, I just kind of looked at some other districts in other parts of the country to see what, kind of what some of the, the various additional death knell consequences that might be associated with accreditation. The third topic has to do with consent agenda. And just, you know, this is, I'm happy to always have conversations with, with board members about topics that come up, either on a break or lunch or before or after meetings, as I've said before. But sometimes rather than interject a point, a thought I have during a meeting, this is kind of my opportunity to make a laundry list, if you will. And one of the things that I was thinking about in the discussion that occurred earlier about consent agenda is that the public does not participate in, in discussion on consent agenda items. And that, the point being that, you know, the changes of when it's, when it occurs on the agenda is less about the public's participation at that particular time. Certainly the minutes are reviewed at the next meeting, approved and publicly available. The meetings themselves are livestreamed. There have been questions about consent agenda for, you know, for the 25 There have been questions about consent agenda for, you know, for the 25-plus years that I've worked with public entities because there are not just the consent agenda, but the agenda itself and the placement of that and the development of it. The Kansas Open Meetings Act, COMA, does not speak to minutes or agendas. It only says that if an agenda is prepared, it is to be made available to those requesting it. So the agency on behalf of the board maintains a list that is renewed every year for every individual or news outlet or any source that wants to receive the public notices as they, as they go out. And I, I'm going to take a wild guess, but I'm guessing Denise Kaler probably maintains that. So if, for example, a special meeting is called or a meeting is called and something, and a notice goes out, it's typically provided in multiple ways, like on the internet or on the website. But a part of the law that says if somebody requests that things be provided, we maintain that list. So if something, and as it relates back to the topic I'm addressing, which is consent agenda or the agenda in just generically, if an agenda is prepared, which is not required, but certainly good practice, but if an agenda is prepared, the only thing that really addresses it in the law is that it must be available to those that have requested it. So, and agendas are in fact, you know, quote preliminary drafts until approved by the board. Because, and I have, did a little research on, there aren't any Attorney General opinions. There's no Kansas case law. There's no federal case law on, you know, consent agendas. But it makes sense if you think about it being a preliminary draft because not only do you approve the agenda at the beginning of a meeting before it's officially followed on, but for example, the Kansas Attorney General did look at whether or not draft minutes were something that needed to be disclosed and provided, kind of under the, under the previous topic where, or the previous comment about that if somebody requests it, do they get an opportunity to have the draft meeting minutes? And the Kansas Attorney General said that, that in that situation, a preliminary draft of meeting minutes is simply that. It's not acted on until, it's not official until presented to the governing body and approved as the minutes of the board meeting. So there was no obligation to provide those. So by corollary analysis, I would say that, you know, an agenda itself would really be a preliminary draft of an agenda because it can always change up until the time you, it's presented for vote and adoption by the board at the beginning of the meeting. These are not intended to address necessarily the concerns that certain board members have about the consent or changing it. But I feel like my job is to say, is to look at what some of the, you know, rules, regulations, laws might be out there that might provide some guidance. And those are the areas that, that I was able to investigate and wanted to share.
Thank you, Mark. Are there, Danny?
We don't have to have a consent agenda. Everything can be itemized. Isn't the consent agenda just there to make things quick?
That's correct. Well, it's, it's to help speed up the process. It is in your board policy. So that would need to be, I know Betty and Kathy are looking at those, but that would need to be amended if you wanted to permanently take it out. But, but that's easy to do. That's your policy.
Betty, I saw your hand on the button. Are you good? Danny, I will add that if we were to do that, we would probably need to add a day to the meeting. It would be a longer meeting. All right, if we're good. I'm going to move on to requests for future agenda items. Okay, Betty?
Actually, there are two things. And the first one is on violence in schools. And we do have an uptick and it's not just in large urban districts. I understand this is statewide. And because there's been solutions offered that range from zero tolerance to expulsions, the School Mental Health Advisory Council is looking at violence under the realm of mental health. And I do know that there are some districts that are putting together task force to look at that and maybe some solutions. So that's a little bit of background, but what I want to request is that we would have a presentation from the School Mental Health Advisory Council on their, their findings, their suggestions, something to help us put school violence in a perspective so that we are able to perhaps offer guidance to districts on that. That's request number one. Request number two I brought up in the past, a need to shore up IPS. And we've had the conversations about, you know, a number of schools who are successful have shown that they implement that with great fidelity. We also know that there are some school districts that treat it as just another state mandate. And based on our conversation with Board of Regents this morning and how they were emphasizing the IPS and how important that is to moving forward with their plans, I also know that we have someone out that's following up with districts on that. But once again, I'd like perhaps to request an agenda item where we can talk about ways that we can shore up IPS, particularly in those districts that don't seem to exercise the fidelity. I've been told by other board members that, well, accreditation is what we, what we have in place. I don't want to use that hammer. I want us to be able to embrace IPS for what it brings to the table and what it can do for our students. So at some point, to have a presentation on the individualized plan of study, what effective ways we might be able to look at to shore that up and, and how we can move forward with a strong commitment from the districts on that. That takes care of my two.
Randy?
That request, Betty, isn't any stealth request that you're going to slide in there for me to do a video. She suggested that I need to do a video.
And, and I do, really, I have to comment on that because as many of you may or may not know, I do have a teenage daughter and Randy got a.
Probably a graduate, by the way.
Yes. Randy got a chance to, to visit with her. And I was one of those that did not have a lot of stock in that because when she got some results, it was, from a parent's perspective, nonsensical kinds of career possibilities. You know, no, 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 we're not going that way. We're going to do something different. So I was very dismissive of that. Randy got a chance to visit with her and it was such a learning experience for me because as he shared with her the career suggestions, he opened up even my thought process to the fact that this just gives you examples of careers that utilize or emphasize those skills that you have. As an example, it was suggested that she would look at a career as a receptionist. I wanted more for her than that, so I was like, I'm not paying that any attention. What he brought out was just the suggestion for that career emphasizes how well she gets along with people, that she might be more interested in the service industry. It brought my, it opened my thought process up. And I encouraged Randy after that meeting, I think if you were to do a video, make it available, not just to a parent that you were meeting with, but where all parents could see exactly what IPS can do with your child and their career suggestion. As we were to look at ways of getting parental buy-in to, this really may be a useful tool to understand from a broader perspective what this brings to the table. So I consistently told him, I think you should make a video. I think on behalf of the state board for you to explain what this is saying. We had a previous board member that said, it said her daughter should be a bartender. And of course, she dismissed that. But with his perspective, you could see how, this isn't saying she should be a receptionist. This is talking about possibilities that fit the skills, the skills that they have. That's a great explanation and I think we need a way of, of putting that out to the public. Sorry, Randy, but you opened the door for that.
Any other future agenda items?
I do.
Requests, Jim?
This is a follow-up from Craig's presentation yesterday. Have you given this a great deal of thought? And this is probably, you're going to think some of these things are stupid. And I've got to do a preliminary. A friend of mine who was a retired judge told me one time that the worst thing you can have is a bully with power. He is so respected that when he retired, the Wilson County courtroom where he presided is actually named for him. And I have a great deal of respect for him. I see what happens to our staff across the street as being, in many cases, victims of bullying. People with power. And so there are a whole lot of unintended consequences to what I'm going to suggest now. And so I'm asking for a discussion, and I really don't know what the answer is, but I would like to at least have a discussion about if we should prohibit our staff from going across the street and making presentations unless we can be assured that they are treated with the respect they deserve. And I'd like, I'd like to have that discussion. There are all sorts of unintended consequences to that and, and they all need to be discussed. It could be counterproductive. I don't know. But I think that we need to make sure that the people know that we expect our staff members, now, we only have three employees, but the people, but Randy has a whole bunch of them and they all support us, that we expect them to be treated with, with the respect they deserve. And I think, and if we decide to do that, I would like to encourage those other organizations that support public education maybe to have the same attitude, the expectation. Yesterday, our chair told us that she basically expected us to have civil discourse. That has been the expectation the whole time I've been on the board here in this room. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to expect that across the street. That's number one. Number two, I think we should condemn in the greatest, as strongly as we possibly can, the decision not to call the task force. We need to have a discussion. As a matter of fact, the decision, I'll just put it plainly, the decision not to have it, in my view, is like saying, if I can't get my way, I'm going to take my marbles and go home. I consider that decision infantile. And I would hope that it, we have no power, but I would hope that we take every, that we, in the strongest way possible, condemn that action.
Can I second that? Dina?
If I might say, I've also observed when members of this body have, have given testimony that they have not always been treated with respect. And I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about another member that their questions are concerning the way they're asked. So it, it seems to me that I also heard, and maybe she was referencing the fact that she had invited you to, to come and speak as a member of the task force. But she had said that, that, that the Board of Ed had been asked to give testimony and refused. So that was a statement that was made. So I wanted to know, I was going to talk to you privately about that, but because we were not asked, so the two of us are liaison, so I wanted to know where that had come from. But anyway, I, I think it's a broader issue. And I also observe other individuals who represent organizations that represent teachers, represent boards of education, not always being treated with respect either. So that's, I think we could add that to our concern. Thank you.
Duly noted. And I want to answer your question. I personally declined to go. I did not decline on behalf of the board. And I think that that was clear in the email.
But she took it.
Interesting.
Either that or she was.
Okay. Any addition?
She was beyond her stretch who she had invited.
Any other future agenda items before we adjourn? Okay. With that, I think we are done. See you all next month.